This conference will now be recorded.
We're back. Neil, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Neil Filke from Yanosan one. May I approach?
Sure, come forward.
In the old days before we changed our dumps to transfer stations, the Chalmers dump was on fire all the time. It was always a herd of birds. And at the time, we generated a dog food, a 50-pound dog food bag, volume-wise of trash that we would take to the Chalmers dump once every two months. And we had neighbors that were taking two pickup loads a week. And I'll be damned if I was going to subsidize their waste. Anyways, metering by volume, rate, or time justifies billing for phone and water and gas and even income tax. Right now, I have a bill, solid waste bill, for 2,757. Solid Waste needs to figure out how to accommodate people who have issues rather than just assuming that they paid the bill because the county says so. Anyways, I don't want to take up any more of your time. I'm further explained by what I passed out to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Please come forward. Stephen Toll. At a recent commission meeting, the county manager Brent said that the town suggested had invited the county to a joint retreat somewhere in the neighborhood of Albuquerque, east of Albuquerque. That's the better part. It's at least two hours away, probably closer to three hours away. The Open Meetings Act requires that meetings be open, that the community be permitted to attend and to listen. To go to three hours away is certainly a violation of the spirit of the law. I hope that you folks don't agree to that. If you want to have a joint meeting, have it here in the town court, the ski valley, and have it up there. And while you're up there, explain to this community the history of the tax increment development district. What did this community get in return for the establishment of that district? I say that because the town, under its Metropolitan Development Area Agency Authority, has indicated that they may pursue a tax increment financing district in order to support the Metropolitan Development Agency, the authority, the area. I think that's terribly important, that this community knows the history of what happened, what occurred, what are the reports that indicate the monies that were forgone in the Taos Ski Valley that were forgone in this community and the resulting infrastructure construction up in the Taos Ski Valley. What did we get for dollars? The tax increment financing legislation indicates that the primary purpose is for improvement of infrastructure and creation of jobs. What kind of jobs did this community get in return for the tax dollars that were essentially given to the Taos Ski Valley? I don't think there's anything more important right now than understanding where our monies come from. You folks are always, as well, all the elected bodies in this community are always talking about money, money, money. It seems that right now, money, that our back pockets are filled, so to speak, in our manner of speaking. So with that idea in mind, I suggest that you suggest to the town that they hold their meeting up in the, your joint meeting up in the ski valley. Let this community hear what you have to say. Why would you go three hours away and talk about important matters? The town refers to it as a strategic retreat. So if your strategies are going to be discussed, shouldn't this community know what they are? Why would you go someplace to make it difficult? Yes, I agree. Maybe going there meets the letter of the law, but why would you require somebody who wants to be part of the decision-making, who wants to hear about the decision that you make? And I'm finished. Why would you make it difficult for them to be a part of that? If you want engagement in this community, why would you make it difficult? Why would you do that? Gracias.
Thank you. Anyone else like to three minutes to speak? If not, we'll move on. On the agenda, we have next three minutes. Approval of September 17th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of our regular meeting minutes from September 17th, 2024.
Motion by Commissioner Bush.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mascherini. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Then we move next to to 10 public hearings. We have a couple of public hearings. The first one is a discussion, consideration, and decision on a transfer of dispenser-type liquor application for Abe's Cantina LLC. Who is presenting on this one? Please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Adela Duran, and I'm serving as agent on behalf of Abe's Cantina. I'm trusting that many of you are familiar with Abe's Cantina, which is off Highway 150 in Arroyo Seco. They've been around in business for many decades. And the request is to transfer the liquor license from the parents. Abel and Grace are transferring their liquor licenses to their daughter Lena and their niece Shannon Struck. And that is the issue here today, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the commissioners. Apparently, we have no questions.
Just a comment. And that is a great place to eat.
I truly appreciate that. Wonderful. Let Lena know you said that. With that, I will make a motion to approve.
Sorry, do that. I think we have to open up the public. Are there any questions or comments from the public on this, on this transfer of a liquor license for one of those, another within the Taos County? Anyone in the audience? Okay, if not, then Commissioner Behill, go ahead.
Yes, motion to approve.
And in honor of the best breakfast breeders in the county, I will second that motion.
Okay, well, motion by Commissioner Behill. Second by Commissioner Bush to approve this transfer. Is there any other discussion or comments before the votes? If not, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Mr. Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make one more comment, and that's I noticed that Shannon was on up here this morning, and I worked very closely with her, and she was very helpful to me. Just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a second public hearing here, and this is 10B. This is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding appeal 34-001, the appeal of a decision made by the Taos County Planning Commission, the decision on July 25, 2024. The appellant is the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association, and the appeal regards a decision by the planning commission to approve a special use permit application, SPUSC-24-004, submitted by Christine Swin at Well LLC as agents on behalf of BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC, parent company of Allsops, the applicant for a gas station and convenience store at the corner of New Mexico 150 and New Mexico 522 in El Prado. And on this one, we'll follow a procedure. We give everybody an opportunity to speak, and the first to speak will be the appellant. The appellant shall have 20 minutes, and then, of course, the appellee will have 20 minutes, and then the planning department will have a presentation. So who is here to represent the appellant? Please come forward.
Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. We respectfully request more than 20 minutes, please.
Okay, we'll give you 25.
How about 30?
Okay, we'll negotiate to 30.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Each of you should have a binder. It's white, looks like this. Do each have that? Okay, I'm going to walk you through that really quickly, so. You have eight tabs in your binder. Do you need me to swear in? Do you need?
Yes.
Yeah, probably. Right?
Yes.
Can we swear in as a group?
Yes. You can swear everyone in the.
Everyone who's speaking, please stand up, even if you're doing three minutes.
Okay, go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Do you swear in from under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Cardinal Rager, and I am a board member of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association. We are the appellant here, and we have a presentation team from the board as well as neighbors that will be presenting. And then there are also three-minute speakers as well. So in your notebooks, there are eight tabs. A, B, C, and D under tab one is, shows you the July 25, 2024 Planning Commission decision. The copy of the appeal is here. The bylaws for the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association are here, and for your convenience ordinance 2003-1. Any questions on that? Okay, so our presentation team will be working through each of these tabs. Okay. The second tab is a summary of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association vision. I want all of us in this room to think about what the word neighbor means to you. Everyone here, please think about what the word neighbor means to you as I speak. A neighbor may be next door to your home, behind you, across the road, down the road. A neighbor may be the next town over, the town of Taos, Arroyo Seco, Falta, Cuesta, et cetera, or the next state over, Colorado, Oklahoma, et cetera. I understand that the meaning of neighbor is in the eye of the beholder, but assuming anyone outside of a thousand feet of this proposed Allsops is not a neighbor and therefore not valuable in this discussion is disconcerting. That is what happened during the two Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association meetings on January 9 and April 9, as well as during the Taos County Planning Commission meeting on July 25 of this year. A majority of neighbors were completely dismissed. Yet, the agent and the representatives have testified that they worked extensively with the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association. This is not true. They talked at us. They addressed what they wanted to address and ignored the rest, which were our most important concerns. Some say that those who bought in the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association have buyer's remorse because of the recent proposed development in the area. Quite the contrary. People who bought and live in the area have buyer's confidence because of the Neighborhood Association and 2003-1. The caveat is that 2003-1 must be respected, followed, and enforced. Commissioners, for your convenience, 2003-1 is in your binder. It's tab 1D of your white binder. Welcome to the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association. I invite everyone in this room and listening online to visit the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association website at ulcna.org and read our vision. Commissioners, the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association's comprehensive vision is also in each of your white binders, and I invite you to review it for future development in the area. In the interest of time today, I will summarize for you and those present the vision of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association. The vision for our neighborhood is that of a rural community which continues and encourages the traditional residential use of the land, which supports compatible farming and ranching activities, and the development of compatible commercial activities. Central to this vision is the conservation of the scenic beauty, the rural nature, and the natural resources of the area, and the continuous improvement of safety, security, health, welfare, and economic well-being of our residents, specifically under goal number five, control growth. Control growth, development, and commercial activity in the neighborhood under subsection D states promote appropriate mixed-use development which allows compatible commercial activities to coexist with residential development and agriculture. Please note that every vote regarding gas stations, since the association's inception in 2003, demonstrated that over 80% of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association's membership did not favor gas stations. This proposed Allsops is not compatible with the vision of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association, nor the historical uses within the area. In fact, gas stations are specifically cited along with truck stops, massage parlors, and garbage dumps, among others, as being inappropriate development for the neighborhood in goal number five of our vision statement. The existing surrounding businesses at and near the intersection of 64, 150, 522 are wonderfully supported as neighborhood businesses. The Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association recently approved Taos Mountain Grove. The Ace Hardware Plaza, opening soon, we approve that as well. Most businesses are also local and only open during traditional regular business hours. Most close by 6:00 PM each day, and several are open till 9:00 PM. One closes at midnight, three nights a week. None have the after-dark lighting anywhere near the proposed Allsops glow. There is not a single business anywhere in or near the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood that's open 24 hours, every day, year-round. This application is for a special use permit. Section 4.6.1A in Taos Land Use Regulation Ordinance 2018-2 clearly states that if something is otherwise not sensitive to and consistent with the existing traditional and historic uses in the neighborhood, then it must be shown to provide a substantial benefit to the neighborhood. We have heard nothing in this proposal that qualifies as a substantial benefit to our neighborhood. The Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association wants to be a good neighbor, but this is a reciprocal relationship. The Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association told the Allsops agent and representatives what we suggest, and most of our suggestions and compromises were dismissed. It was all about financial gain for BW Gas and Convenience Retail LLC. For example, the agent and the representative stated at an Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association meeting that if they could not be open 24 hours a day, every day, year-round, and sell beer and liquor, that this venture would not be financially feasible for the company. Our Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Zone overlay was established via Taos County Ordinance 2003-1, which established land use regulations in addition to those of the underlying Taos County Land Use Regulation 2018-2, for which all development must comply. We take issue with the fact that the Allsops agent and representatives, as well as the Taos County Planning Department, claim to satisfy all the performance criteria of 2003-1 Subzone 1. So, potential neighbor, this proposal is not compatible with our vision, our neighborhood zoning, or the overall Taos County zoning. Thank you. I also have handouts of what I just shared with you. As a member of our team, I would like to have you refer to tab three. Eugenia will be up next.
Good morning, commissioners. I am Eugenia Harber, and for the past 25 years, I've been a full-time resident of Upper Los Colonias, along with my husband Andres Vargas, who was born and raised here. I've been in the Board of Directors of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association since 2012. Today, I speak both as a resident and as a member of the board, the apparence herein. The board appealed after the planning commission found unanimously in favor of granting the special use permit to Allsops for a 24-bay gas station, three diesel-bay truck stop, and a convenience store which will sell alcohol, both hard and liquor and beer, and will be lit and open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and right in our neighborhood. My topic will be the compatibility standard, which is found in 2018-2 LUR, section 4.6.1A and B. Well, I'm sure you are familiar with the compatibility standards. I'll go over them again quickly because they have yet to be addressed in this case by the planning department, Allsops, or the planning commission. And in my opinion, they are the crux of this case. They constitute the legal standard by which this case must be decided. 2018 LUR section 4.6.1 says that for any special use permit, it must first be determined that it is sensitive to and consistent with the existing traditional and historic uses in the neighborhood, or the development must provide a substantial benefit or support for the neighborhood, or that it wouldn't have a major impact on the neighborhood. The visual impact, again, emphasizes compatibility, or the applicant must propose suitability to the land and the neighborhood character. It's important to note that the compatibility or lack thereof must be with the neighborhood, and in this case, the neighborhood is Upper Los Colonias. It's not El Prado or the gravel pit across the street. It's our neighborhood. And the substantial benefit or lack of major impact also refers to Upper Los Colonias. I think the planning department dislikes the compatibility standard because it's subjective, somewhat amorphous. They want to be able to have a checklist that they can just go down and check everything, make a black-and-white determination. But that's not the law. So what is compatibility? It's something that has to be determined on a case-by-case basis. I am reminded of Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart, who, when asked about a First Amendment case that involved alleged pornography, which is, of course, now protected by the First Amendment, he said, "I can't define pornography, but I know it when I see it." I will argue strenuously that our situation is exactly that. Hard to define, can't be done with a checklist, but you know it when you see it. We're a semi-rural, semi-sequesteral neighborhood with low density. Our vision statement encourages ranching and farming activities, and specifically states that inappropriate developments include gas stations, truck stops, and gravel pits. So what are our commercial businesses in Upper Los Colonias? We have three restaurants, Metalie Golden Pinone Pizanyos, and Toribio's is our next-door neighbor. We have an art gallery, chiropractic, acupuncture, Ted Shoebox's veterinary services, and of course, his home right next door, K-Tow Radio Deli, its bar, hardware store anchored by Rio Grande Ace, rafting company, realtors' photography, home contractors, yoga, massage therapy, Quail Ridge with Taos tennis, tennis and pickleball courts and a pool complex, and we have the possibility of two cannabis growers and retailers. I return to compatibility. Let's take Rio Grande Ace, which I believe is a major development, not even stronger than an SUP. Every of the heels said that when Rio Grande Ace came for a vote before the commission, there was not one complaint. He said it was the only time that it ever happened. For Allsops, there are a parcel of written complaints and letters. What's the difference? Well, Rio Grande Ace will provide services to the neighborhood that we all can use, and also not just our neighborhood, but all the other neighborhoods on our side of town. People have to go into town to buy paint, tour ladders, et cetera, and it benefits not just Los, Upper Los Colonias, but again, everyone around. Allsops will sell gas, diesel, junk food, alcohol, and convenience store items. All of these are already within three miles in El Prado on US 64. Two Speedway stations with convenience stores and other Allsops and the Hale Creek Pueblo Station. Allsops wants to be open 24 hours a day, which none of the other stations do. Their convenience stores close around 10 o'clock, but this doesn't provide a benefit to have a convenience store open all night. Instead, it simply emphasizes that it wants to do something that's not even done in El Prado along a highly commercial road. Rio Grande Ace will keep regular business hours. Allsops open 24 hours, seven days a week. Because it will not be open at night, we have Because it will not be open at night, Rio Grande Ace will have minimal outside lighting. All Subs will have LED lighting that, as the station in town has shown, will be offensive and disturbing in a residential neighborhood, as it shines in the windows on West Road and some of the businesses, perhaps. Rio Grande Ace has lovely, appropriate architectural design. All Subs, not. Perhaps what Rio Grande Ace and all the other businesses in Upper Los Colonias have in common is that they are quiet, they keep regular business hours, and they provide services that all our residents can utilize. None of them disturb the peaceable enjoyment by residents of homes and property. And perhaps that is the definition of compatibility. Neither the Planning Department nor the Planning Commission have said why this proposal is compatible with our neighborhood, nor have they listed the substantial benefits that will accrue to the neighborhood if this station is built. I mean, that's the law. No one has said anything yet about that. All Subs has said that its location will benefit tourists and visitors, but that's not a benefit to our neighborhood. They've speculated that gas prices might drop with increased competition, but the station in town does not have lower gas prices. I went to the Planning Commission hearing and was disappointed, after I verbally read the compatibility standard of 4.6.1, that the Commissioners made no comments or findings about compatibility, but quickly took a vote without adjournment into executive session and just unanimously approved the application. Nothing was said to the people who had written letters in opposition, which I personally found offensive, that decisions are made and it's just like people are brushed off. They patted themselves on the back for having achieved a unanimous vote. I believe the, one of the Commissioners said it was the first time ever they'd had a unanimous vote. A special use permit, by its very definition in 2018-2 LUR, is a permit allowing uses that are otherwise not permitted. Thus, an application for a special use permit starts with a factual determination that the intended use is not permitted, not allowed. It would seem that the burden of proof should fall on the applicant to demonstrate why an allowance should be made for something not otherwise permitted. Ruling something that requires a subjective standard is certainly not easy, but that is the law. And I again paraphrase Justice Potter Stewart: "I may not be able to define incompatibility, but I know it when I see it." And All Subs' proposal is wildly incompatible with a neighbor whose prime demographic is older, the neighborhood is quiet and dark by 8 o'clock at night. I have confidence that you have read the comments by our residents and have given the consideration they deserve, and that you will indeed adhere to the law. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, main speakers, just a point of information. There are eight minutes left of the allotted 30 minutes here.
Eight minutes.
So, a point of clarification, our speaking time is not the 30 minutes. That includes handouts. Okay. So now we will hear from Mark and Jeff with traffic.
Morning. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning, and thank you. Jeff, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, my name is Jeff Stadler, professional land surveyor, resident of Taos for some 45 years.
I'm a resident of El Prado. I live up on Iototo Road, and I've been up there 18 years. Having said that, and before reading my comments on the issue of traffic, I want to make one point very clear: If this All Subs project does go forward, it is not going to turn the intersection... Can you hear me okay? Because this is a little awkward. Yeah, that's a little hard for me. Okay, good. If the All Subs is approved, it is not going to change the intersection at the old blinking light, all of a sudden, from a safe intersection into one of dangerous detail. It's already a dangerous intersection, and the All Subs would only make it more so. Let me explain. The OBL intersection is not without a troubled history. Between 2017 and 2021, there were 34 accidents at that intersection, 34, eight of which involved human injury. That's roughly one accident every other month. And these are only the reported accidents. It's reasonable to assume that there were others that never got on the books. In the Planning Commission hearing on July 25th, Commissioner John Del Margo said, in quotes, "Fatality has occurred there." And then he stated he feared the project would create an even worse situation. In their staff report, the Planning Department dismisses traffic issues with a short paragraph, saying they will rely on the traffic study. Other than Commissioner Del Margo's brief attention to the matter, the Planning Commission also dismisses traffic as a concern. Therefore, it is essentially kick the can down the road. More careful scrutiny of the study itself would be as a number of red flags. It becomes obvious this project would indeed worsen an already dangerous situation. The most glaring red flag is that the traffic study was done on Thursday, December 7th, 2023. December 7th, 2023. The summer tourists have left, right? The snow bunnies, they haven't arrived yet. The summer tourists left. The Taos Ski Valley, Highway 150's major winter traffic generator was operating at only 20% of capacity on December 7th. Thus, the entire traffic study is skewed to the point of irrelevancy, because its statistics are predicated on this one low-volume day. Another red flag is that the study mentions only one Highway 150 traffic generator. That's the Totten Ranch Agro Village. No mention is made of other businesses, such as the soon-to-open Taos Mountain Row immediately next door, nor does it mention Ace Harbor a little further down. The weekend tennis tournaments in the summer at Quail Ridge and tourist traffic to Charming Royal Seaco add to the flow and get no mention. On top of that, KTLA across the street has a weekend flea market. It has a regular music events. It has a restaurant. It has special events continually adding to the traffic. Taos Ski Valley continues to ramp up summer activities, attracting a growing number of tourists, shoppers, hikers, bikers, all whom are willing to fill the parking lots to overflowing. In other words, the projected number of entries and exits to All Subs at peak morning and afternoon hours, as well as other traffic volume statistics, are grossly understated. The study also details the changes to the intersection necessary to accommodate this new project. Two of those changes are deceleration lanes, which are not physically capable of reaching the New Mexico Department of Transportation-recommended standards because there is simply not enough room. The Highway 52 deceleration lane would run out into the intersection itself, and the Highway 150 deceleration lane would block a private driveway. Also, the median on Route 150 is not long enough to prevent drivers from making U-turns into the gas station. The potential hazard isn't even discussed. In the study's summary, it concludes traffic movements, as they currently exist, are not within acceptable levels in multiple directions. They also say these conditions will not improve in the next 10 years. Traffic and turning movements are measured by the New Mexico Department of Transportation using LOS readings. LOS, Level of Service. Level of Service is measured anywhere from A to F, A being good, F being terrible. LOSF means forced flow and jammed traffic. LOSE means unstable flow and intolerable delays. Levels of E and F are noted for various points and exit lanes on Route 1, excuse me, for various points in the intersection. And talk about asking for trouble. The traffic study indicates a shared bike lane in front of Taos Mountain Row, a shared bike lane, and continuing on past All Subs vehicle entrance and exit lanes on 150. It's discouraging. The New Mexico Department of Transportation, who approved the plan, does not realize the building dangers a high-traffic volume business presents at this intersection, especially a business that will attract vehicles like tractor-travers and home-size RVs. It's apparent the state of New Mexico does not consider our health and safety a priority. Commissioners, we hope that you do. Thank you. Okay. Okay, we have exceeded 30 minutes now, but I give you two minutes to wrap it up. So if you want to do it, or, so two minutes to sum it up, wrap it up. I've got that whole thing over there.
So, when we met with the Planning Department, we asked if we could have 45 minutes, and we were told that that would be up to you, and so we had planned for 45 minutes. If you look at your binder, we have prepared a presentation. We are unpaid citizens who have spent four weeks working on this presentation, doing research, not coming from a place of heart and emotion, but coming from a place of data and statistical foundation on why this All Subs is not okay at this corner. So with all due respect, Commissioners, we have, we prepared a presentation that is much longer than we have been allowed. We have a traffic model we wanted to share with you. We have other presenters that would like to share with you, and you can see that in your table of contents if you look at it. We are about two-thirds through. I respectfully request that we be able to finish our presentation, and then you can give the appelli the exact same time, if you wish. If not, then I have, I can come up with a backup.
Yeah, no, we need to have it wrapped up, and of course, you will have an opportunity to reply and respond to the other presentations.
Okay, that's fair. So as part of our wrap-up, then I have handouts for you for each of these tabs. May I have your permission to give those to you?
Oh, actually, to wrap it up in two minutes.
Okay. So, actually, I'm going to hold off on my wrap-up. I'm just going to hand these out. Each of these tabs have a document that is associated with them, and you can move on to the appelli. Fair enough? I'm fast when handing things out. I have plenty of copies for the other side. Mr. Trufiel?
Point of order. The process requires a full hearing on appeal.
Thank you. Okay, we move on. Thank you for moving on with the public hearing, and next we do have a presentation by the appelli, which actually is the applicant. So with the appelli, please come forward.
My Commissioners, glad to be here. I'm Kevin Fannin with Yes by All Subs, the key operator. Thank you so much. As you know, All Subs started right here in New Mexico. New Mexico is my home state. I love the state, and pretty much, I gotta tell you, I love Taos. And it's part of my backyard, too. I just, I just got married last week, and it took us six years, you know, to finally get around to that. I told that to Kurt Edelbrock, and he gave me his condolences. But I say that, not to ingratiate myself to you, but to make a point that every one of those six years, we were up here in Taos at least two or three times. I just, I love Taos, and I consider that part of my backyard. And it's not the backyard of just a certain select internal piece of, you know, people. It's the people's backyard. And so we want to be in this backyard. We are already here in this backyard, and we are that good neighbor, and we want to be that good neighbor. We will, by the time that we're done with this development, should it go forward, have spent $8 million in development costs to develop the 6277 square foot convenience store, fresh meats, poultry, groceries, in addition to, of course, the fueling, the fueling aspect of it as well. Tax revenues, as we've discussed, are $75,000. We'll be employing 18 to 24 employees, full, full and part-time. We want to be that good neighbor. We're the kind of neighbor that you'll want your cousins and nieces and nephews to be employed by. We want to be here. We look forward to being here. With that, I am here also with my counterpart, Andrew Meischlein. He was also in the Real Estate Department, as well as John Whitehead with Atwell Engineers. Andy, I have a USB with the exhibit. If you wouldn't mind pulling up document number three, that'll give us at least a general overview of the aerial, the intersection, and distances to residences and businesses. Thank you so much. Yeah, document number three. I don't think that's it. No, the document I'm talking about is in aerial. Yeah, location aerial, that's too down. Perfect, thank you. That shows some boundaries of the Neighborhood Association as well. That shows some boundaries of the neighborhood association as well.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Andrew Meischlein. Do I need to be sworn in or?
Did you stand up whenever you were?
I did not.
Including you, you are.
Do you swear to affirm under oath the penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual? Thank you.
Andrew Meischlein, 45, Caillou, Del Duarte, Placitas, New Mexico. This morning, we heard a lot of speaking on emotions and how the neighborhood feels. I would like to remind the group that when we're coming here and we're looking to be a neighbor and a backyard, the only thing we have to work off of is what's codified. We heard the Upper Las Colonia Neighborhood Association speak quite a bit to their vision, which is not included inside their code. When we develop these sites, we look at the local regulations to determine what we need to do and how we can be a good fit and a good neighbor in the community. Couple of the points they spoke on were compatibility. In the beginning of this process, we go through what's called a site selection process. That includes looking at traffic, population densities, use, competitors, everything around there. And in doing this, we identified this site as a major commercial corridor on the top end of Taos. In this site selection process, it's never our intention to draw traffic. That's not how our business model works. We always capture what's existing there. We've met with planning and zoning, and they gave us unanimous decision to approval. We've had several experts look at all factors of this, from the design to the traffic to the lighting. And we pulled in and made sure we fit within the existing code. This site is zoned commercial. It's surrounded entirely by commercial zoning. As you can see on the exhibit here, all of that is commercial. And the closest residential house is 1,555 feet. To the rest, we're shielded by a gravel pit. We met with Upper Las Colonia Neighborhood Association, and we tried to work with them. We made several concessions on feedback that we heard from them, whether it was architectural design or lighting. We tried to meet every opportunity that they gave us. Eventually, after the third meeting, we determined that these meetings were no longer productive, and the requests from the community were becoming much more absurd. One of the other points brought up this morning was traffic. Again, we've used several experts to identify and project existing traffic and what it would be, how it would be impacted if we come, if we built a site. Additionally, how to mitigate any issues. New Mexico DOT has issued a permit after reviewing it and agreeing with our use. This set traffic report speaks up until 2034 and the impacts that are had there. And this has been accepted by the New Mexico DOT. Additionally, I mentioned earlier, our idea is not to draw traffic. Our idea is to capture existing traffic. One of the benefits of that is this will reduce traffic in town as some larger trucks no longer have the need to drive into town to get diesel. The other issue I heard was lighting. We've worked with Andy Jones to not only meet but exceed the New Mexico Dark Skies Ordinance and the Taos County Dark Skies Ordinance. We've done this through lowering the temperature and lowering the intensity and making sure that our light remains on our site. That's all I have.
Yeah. Good morning. Thank you for having us. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is John Boynton. I'm Director of Development Services with Atwell Engineering. Traditionally, Christine would be handling this as she was the applicant and the agent. She is not available today, so I'm standing in her place. Can you hear me now? She asked me to wear red so I would be a target, so I complied with that. So thank you for having me. I want to kind of speak to some of the experiences I have nationally from going place to place and being in these types of hearings. Some of the things that I heard today are emotionally driven, in my opinion. A special use permit is a mechanism by most municipalities to ensure compatibility of that special use inside whatever corridor it is. Some examples of other meetings I attend for special use permits would include daycares. Daycares require special use permit because not everybody wants screaming kids on the corner of their residential neighborhood. Urgent care is another special use permit, typically something that I go to hearings on. Again, having care for those patients is not always what Jim and Nancy thought they would have on the corner. Our application was put together with great detail and a lot of expense to meet the standard of what have you done to prove that you belong here? We spent several thousands of dollars on expert traffic analysis, submitted that to DOT, and received their comments and/or approvals for this project, which you have in the file. There is a lot of emotional play as to what this intersection is or is not. The DOT has determined based off of trip measurements that are tablized and forced on us to use. We don't always agree with those tables, but we have to use them, that this is not an intersection that we are going to create more traffic. Their exhibit does not necessarily reflect the traffic analysis, nor does it reflect the DOT-approved permit, which does extend the median path, the ride-in, ride-out only on Highway 150. So there are a lot of emotional points that have been brought up today. Compatibility and lighting. We've addressed lighting, and we will continue to address lighting to make sure that we're complying with dark skies, which is making sure our fixtures are pointed down and we're keeping our light as low as we can. We've softened the temperature to a 3,000 K, which is in essence yellow, if you warm white as opposed to bright white. And again, we've complied with changing our complete exterior components based off of feedback from the, from the community and the association on what would traditionally look like a structure in there. So we feel like we're outreach to the community. Our services are needed and are used by several people who frequent the store. I mean, we don't build stores to close them. We build stores to serve the community. So again, we think this is a service to the community. Gas service is used by a lot of people, diesel service, and especially this format of store. There is no truck parking, so it is not a truck stop. There are three fueling positions. These could easily be rural application fuelings, picked-up trucks and large trailers, hay bales, for example. Utilize these types of facilities, not heavy over-the-road truckers that are spending the night in the parking lot. There's no parking for trucks. There's no showers for trucks. This is not a truck stop. This is a C-store. Some people call it a corner store. That's where it belongs, on the corner in front of the community, so they can get there and utilize it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so anything further for the appelli? As I conclude the official presentation, okay? All right, it is point, the appelli does have 10 minutes to respond to the appelli's presentation.
I call Jeff Stadler, please. This is tab five. He will be speaking to coverage, signage, the plaza, parking, and the asequias. And I believe the asequia association is here to support him.
Good morning, everyone. So basically, this is in Subzone 1 of the Upper Las Colonias Neighborhood Association. They talk about allowed uses. Any that meets the performance criteria for the subzone as indicated herein is approved by the Taos County Commission. There are nine performance criteria that all have to be met for it to become an allowable use. Part of this gets into, one of the performance criterias talks about units per acre. Units per acre, as defined in the 2018-02 Land Use Code, Land Use Regulations, they're talking about residential applications. And so the residential applications would be like condominiums, townhouses, apartment buildings, things like that. That's what units apply to. There's no connection between units and commercial businesses. So they have to comply with, in a special use permit, that's why they're asking for a special use permit. And then, but by that, they have to comply with the nine criteria. And it includes a special use. So criteria number two is that the maximum coverage of any parcel, all improvements, including buildings, parking, roadways, driveways, patios, courtyards, et cetera, is limited to no more than 50% of the total acreage that the site is on. The application is not in compliance with this criteria. The application coverage has not taken into account the size of the property, which had been slightly diminished by a deed that went out from the property owner. The application did not include the area for the septic system. The coverage did not include the area for the detention ponds. Both of these areas are absolutely part of all improvements, and both of these areas are absolutely mandatory for the applicant to comply with liquid waste disposal from the building and managing storm runoff from the pavement, buildings, canopies for this special use. I estimate the actual coverage being conservative, probably in the 57 to 59 percentile. The other thing they talk about in performance criteria is maximum height of buildings, 23 feet from the lowest point. The application may or may not be in compliance here because basically they refuse to show any elevations for two things, the three diesel pump canopy and also the freestanding sign. Without elevation things, we don't know that they're under 23 feet. There's no way of knowing. On to performance criteria six. Signage is restricted to 32 square feet maximum, size of four-by-eight sheet of plywood. That's the maximum signage for the entire site. The application is not in compliance with this. The scale dimensions from the storefront sign alone is three feet by 22, and that's 66 square feet. The fuel canopy in front of the store has four signs of two by 16, which is 128. So just on the ones that are shown, they're at 194 square feet, which is six times what's allowable. And that doesn't even include the All Subs canopy, I mean, the diesel canopy, which may or may not have signs on them, but they don't put it, so we don't know. And they have a freestanding sign also. So ready six times over, and these other things, they don't even include in their application so that we could add that to that. Performance criteria seven. Architectural standard of a plaza typical of many northern New Mexico communities. A plaza consists of the following attributes. A, an entry and exit through openings and an adobe-style wall that defines the boundary of the development, at least the boundary of the development that faces the access roadway. The application is not in compliance with this performance criteria. The application only provides just enough wall on the other side of the entry to show that there's an opening, but it doesn't continue the wall on the two sides that face New Mexico 150 and New Mexico 522. So they're showing just enough wall to show the openings. Of course, you'd have an opening there. That's where the driveway comes into. So when I mentioned earlier that they have to comply with all nine performance criteria to qualify as an allowable use, what I just told you was they did not comply with three of the nine. The All Subs Travel Center's special use is not an allowable use in the Subzone 1 because of this. They did not comply with the ordinances that you have. There are two additional items in addition to that that I would also like to address. One thing is the parking spaces at the store. Even by the applicant's own materials, they say 31 spaces are required, and that does comply with the International Building Code. If you count the parking spaces around the building, there's only 22. So they're in, they're not in compliance with their own requirements on this that are based on international building. The other thing I'd like to bring up is in the Land Use Regulations, under Terrain Management, is the following statement. Water pollution hazards. The following land uses and/or activities are designed as potential water pollution hazards and must be set back from any stream or water body by the distance indicated below. For above-ground or underground petroleum storage facilities, which we have here, they need 150 feet away from those water bodies. In the application, they show two spots for that, and both of those spots are within 150 feet of the asequia they want on Wall from the syrup. I would like to bring up Mary Ann and Linda Romo from the asequia association and let them give their take on this.
Okay, two minutes that they would have.
Actually, there are three left. Three minutes left of their time.
That's public. Let's still respond. Yeah, and it's eight now. Did you raise your hand?
Yes, I raised my hand. Thank you. I'm hoping I have my papers in order. Good morning to everyone, and thank you for allowing us to present. My name is Linda Romo. I'm a parxiante and treasurer of the Lower Manuel Andres Trujillo and Juan Manuel Lucero Ditch Association of Lower Las Colonias. And this comes from the heart of a third generation of a sixth-generation family here in Taos. The impact of asequias in northern New Mexico throughout its long history has been extremely significant and has been an integral part of the culture and heritage of the area. It has been the lifeblood of the Taos region. The origin of the asequias as an institution has been traced by historians to Moorish, Spanish, and Indian resources. The Pueblo Indians had been practicing irrigation and growing crops when the Spanish explorers and colonists first came to Taos. They combined their customs and knowledge with those of the Pueblo's. 408 years later, that old method of operation is still in use today. As some of you know, the water of the Juan Manuel Lucero asequia originates at the foot of the mountains of Taos Pueblo. It travels north on Pueblo land, flowing under Highway 150, passing the former Stewart Airbnb and into the asequia in front of the proposed Ace Hardware Building, then flows north to the Bastion property. It then crosses Highway 522. It continues on the south side of El Prado Water and Sanitation Water Tanks and flows through the flume across Highway 64. Once the water crosses the flume, it flows south along Blueberry Hill Road, providing life-giving water to the entire Lower Las Colonias Valley through two points of diversion. If you happen to travel on Blueberry Hill Road, you will see sheep, cows... If you happen to travel on Blueberry Hill Road, you will see sheep, cows grazing below. Further down, you will see horses grazing and stacks of harvested hay. We, the commissioners and parxiantes of our asequia association, strongly feel that we are constantly defending the asequias from encroachment by commercial entities in order to maintain the culture and integrity of the asequias and the protection of agriculture and farming as an important part of our cultural heritage. Monetary gain has become more important than maintaining his rhetorical and ancient traditions. It is of extreme importance for all of us who live in Taos, regardless of when we settled here, to protect, to value, and to maintain the asequia culture and make it, make it an ongoing part of everyone's heritage. It is the responsibility of our elected or appointed government officials to preserve, protect, and support the asequia house for future generations. As has been said by some, we have the right to do whatever we want with our property. All Taos seniors, including government, have the responsibility of weighing the impact of the decisions we make concerning the land, water, and the environment around us for future generations. We, the commissioners, vehemently opposed a gas station and convenience store on the northwest intersection of New Mexico 522 and New Mexico 150 because it would be detrimental to the Juan Manuel Lucero asequia that runs through the parcel. We opposed for the following reasons. The application is not in compliance with the 150-feet setback that has, the 150-feet setback has not been met for the underground storage of hazardous substances, gas and diesel. The pollution caused by spills on the pavement running into the soil and the asequia. The pollution of trash and other debris, liquor bottles, cans, paper bags tossed or falling in, in the ditch. If you visit any of the all subs and some of the stores and you take a walk around some of the all subs, there is lots of trash that is not, that would go in the ditch. We all benefit from unpolluted mountain waters running.
Thank you, Ms. Romo. Good morning, sir. Good morning, commissioners. The, the appeal proceeding, hearing procedures that we're following, we're following them just as, as they're written. But one of the things that I think is missing, that I think needs to be included, is the opportunity for cross-examination. State law makes it pretty clear that has to, that at least has to be the opportunity for that. Given that, well, it might be out of order because it's not in here anywhere, now might be the appropriate time to allow the parties to ask questions of each other with regard to whatever was testified today. So you can't ask, you know, like, is new tree, you hate your mother-in-law, or something like that. It has to be something that was testified to today. For instance, if you wanted to, if the appellant wanted to ask a question about the gentleman's red shirt, that would be appropriate. Or about anything that they testified, but it has to be within the scope of direct. So now might be a good time to allow that. Ordinarily, it's the appellant that would go first, and the, the way it would work is the appellant or the representative, which includes this lady here.
Fourteen.
Oh, well, we need one person, so you gonna be the person?
No.
Okay, she would get up here and she would, if she asked questions of the other side, voice them to the chair, and then the chair would then ask the appellant the question. That's the filter by which we would make sure that was in the scope of direct. I'll stand by if there are any questions. If the commission wants to proceed with that, as I suggested, they would do that now.
How much time should be allowed in?
There isn't any set time, so again, it's not in the procedures. So I think what you do is just ask, you know, however many questions they have. I don't think it'll take, it generally doesn't take very long, Mr. Chairman. If it does extend a period of time, you might want to say, well, you have one more, two, or two more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so does the appellant have a question with the appellee on cross-examination?
We do not, commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does a, 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 a,[965.12]
County Commissioners have had the opportunity to read the letter that I submitted on September 16th. It speaks of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association lacking the authority to file this appeal based on bylaw violations and other misconducts by the board members and officers. Included in their appeal application are two pages of the neighborhood bylaws, Pages 1 and Pages 4. Pages 2 and 3 were intentionally and purposely omitted because they contain proof of the eligibility, qualification, and term limits of the directors and officers. Page 3, Article 5, Section 3 states, "The term for officers shall be one year, period." Kurt Edelbrock, the president of Upper Los Colonias, who submitted this appeal on behalf of the neighborhood, has been the president since at least 2016, according to their website meeting minutes. Edelbrock has exceeded his term limit by at least eight years. Phil Caston, the vice president, chair, and the only member of the Development Standards Board since 2021. He has overstayed his term by three years. Also important to note, Mr. Caston does not own any property in Upper Los Colonias. Secretary Jeff Tettenbaum from Fort Worth, Texas, has held his office since 2016, according to meeting minutes. He too has overstayed his term by at least eight years. Board member Eugenia Haber utilizes her husband Andreas Vargas to notarize documents recorded in Taos County. A notary is prohibited from notarizing documents for a spouse, according to the Secretariat of State's New Mexico Notarial Officer Handbook. It is a misdemeanor and each violation upon conviction shall be punished by a fine, imprisonment, or both. Of the above-mentioned bylaw violations and misconducts by officers and board members, the most outrageous is by Kurt Edelbrock. He lacked the authority to submit this appeal as he is not allowed to be president beyond a one-year term. Edelbrock knowingly and intentionally failed to include Pages 2 and 3 of the bylaws in the appeal application because it proves he was not permitted to remain president indefinitely. By not including these pages, Edelbrock has purposely attempted to mislead the commissioners, planning, and zoning, and the entire community. UL CNA Board Members Cardinal and Eugenia Haber, during their presentations today stated, "Rules must be followed." Well, they haven't followed their own rules, nor the ordinance they accuse All Subs of not following. They should be reason enough to dismiss this appeal and uphold the unanimous decision made by the Taos County Planning and Zoning Commission. I also request that the county attorney review the facts and conduct of Upper Los Colonias and review their status as a neighborhood association for gross misconduct. Please vote to dismiss this appeal and approve the All Subs project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Francisco Cora. Francisco, Francisco Cora.
I'm just gonna make this short. Commissioners, the way I look at it, I think that we vote you guys in there to uphold the laws. The county, you know, the planning and zoning, they zone the properties that are commercial and residential. This is a commercial property. And for developers that, you know, want to come in and create jobs for the youth instead of them being out there, you know, clipping pot or smoking pot, or, you know, you know, the... I feel that every time there is a commercial project that comes to our community, it don't matter what it is, it's always opposed and there's always negative, you know, people rejecting certain projects, no matter what. But the way I look at it is, if we have commercial property, they should be more friendly to developers that, you know, want to make the community grow in a good way. And I believe that the All Subs would be beneficial for people coming in that don't want to go through town through all the crazy construction and cause more traffic jams. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the list is Jennifer Jones.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Boston-Jones. So I am the daughter of George Boston. And so this area does directly impact me and my family. I wanted to mention the fact that if we're going to speak about neighbors and neighbors being all the way to the state borders, then we have to also make sure, including Tres Piedras, Cuesta Postea, the Ski Valley, all of these other areas, they're impacted by a gas station and a convenience store that's going to bring them some conveniences that they might not have otherwise had. The other thing I want to mention, I'm a paramedic. I worked in Taos County. I worked for the ambulance. I had run calls in the middle of the night all the way to Postea. Where, in fact, maybe it was a part that had an elk and there was no injured patient, so we drove all the way back into town. There is nowhere that's open 24 hours a day for any of the public safety people to go in and perhaps get a drink, get a burrito, get something to eat at 2:00 in the morning when they are exhausted for working their shifts. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I appreciate the time. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. John Peter. John Peter.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have been a resident and lived in El Prado since 1967. And we have needed a gas station up there where you can pull in trailers, semi trucks, and stuff to fuel up. I haul animals with trailers. I haul hay at times with trailers. And it's been a nightmare all these years to be able to get into any of these other small gas stations to fuel up because people are in your way and you can't, you know, wind your way around there. So I actually think it's time for the Commissioners to take into consideration the farmers and ranchers in this county that help provide food and also the construction workers that build all these houses for all these people that have moved in and haul the materials and stuff in from elsewhere. We do not have railroads or airplanes that haul stuff in here. We have trucks that haul everything into this county from somewhere else to provide the services that everybody needs. And I am full support of this station. And I'm full support of it being open 24 hours a day because when I've been hauling animals, it's hot at night and it's hard to find some place to fuel up when you're hauling animals because it's cooler at night to haul those and all of that. The other thing is, when I came here, there were six gas stations in El Prado. There's two in there now, and they sell junk gas. They do not sell the top-tier gas, which All Subs Valerio sells top-tier gas lanes for your engines to keep them cleaner. And this is something that we need over there. And it takes you anywhere from 35 minutes for an hour from us over on the north side to drive over to the other side of town here to get fuel there. And it takes an hour of time. And so it would be very nice to have that there. And the other thing is, we need a store over there that we can get some items in 24 hours a day. And the new All Subs, they have vegetables in there. They've had meat. And they've had a lot more than either of those other two stores that Speedway has offer. So, I mean, I just think this makes sense because there's an awful lot of truck traffic at that intersection. And I see people hauling equipment all the time. They need a place to pull in so they can fuel their diesel equipment. I mean, there's construction staff going back and forth for those roads there that meet from everywhere constantly. And so I find this is a need of a really good gas station there that we can rely on. Plus the fact they also have gasoline that does not have the, the ethanol on there too, which is, some of us and some of our equipment want that. So it would provide a really good thing for us. And if you want to make that intersection a little more safer, will the county please fix the streetlights that you're obligated to have responsibility for at that light? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Kurt Edelbrock. Is that correct?
Thank you very much for seeing this today and listening to our views. I am the president of Upper Los Colonias. And I want to thank Miriam for maybe... It's so hard to get people to be able to sit on the board. So now I got to wait out. That was supposed to be funny. I'm sitting here wondering what the property rights of the individual are. And we know that this is... Well, let me preface this. I'd love Upper Los Colonias to stay exactly as it is. I don't want any change. I love it there. We know there's going to be growth. There's going to be change. I'm concerned about the property rights for commercial property because I probably have one of the larger commercial properties in Upper Los Colonias. And what I might want to do in the future, I would rather not have controlled completely. I would stay within the boundaries that we've already talked about today. And they've done a great job, and I really appreciate their presentation today from the board. The commercial property rights, I'm not sure what it means to be compatible. And I don't want the lights, if I can help it to. But they may work with us if we talk more. I don't know whether you can put other restrictions on it yourselves. And if you can, you may be able to work with them as doing something that's appropriate. Mr. Bastian has really tried hard on being a good community member in a lot of ways. And so I really believe in what he's trying to do. Again, I'd rather not see it myself. I have one other request of the board, if you could, of the commission. Stevie Bass is in the corner and a mother of a very special needs child and would like to talk against the proposed All Subs as early as you possibly can have her. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt. Next on the list is Kobe Sineka. Am I sure the last name?
She's not.
She's not.
She's gone.
She's gone.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Next on the list then is...
Do you want to let that lady, lady go back there first? Just let her go if you think...
Okay. All right. Is she gonna...
I understand that, but...
Can you say hi?
Hi. I'm here.
Hi, there. My name is Stevie Bass. And I'm speaking as a resident. My daughter Jessie has neurospecial needs, including... No, you can't talk right now, okay? Autism, intellectual and developmental disability, and seizure disorder. She's legally blind. She's immunocompromised. And we haven't been anywhere within people since COVID began. So this is, to give you an idea how important this is for me to express what we need to express. We looked long and hard 12 years ago for a residence for Jessie. And we found one in Upper Los Colonias. A quiet place, dark. And our neurologist has said the seizure triggers are, among other things, stress. Wait a minute. Overstimulation and fatigue. She knew it's a very dark place and quiet to sleep. So the past 12 years, we've been doing very well. We've been very happy with our residents. It's just, it's up the hill from the intersection. And it's great. It's been really good. I am just expressing this because it's something no one may think about. If there's someone with extreme special needs that could... I'm worried that her environment will change. And that's why I'm expressing this today. She wants to tell you about her favorite music.
What is it?
What is it? You gotta say it fast. Crosby, Stills, Nash &amp; Young. No, that's not... We're talking about your home, okay? So if you keep this in mind as you think about your decision here, these are the kinds of things that also come into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the list, I'm not sure the first name here, Tarleton. I can't read the first name. Go ahead. Come forward. May I?
My name is Michael Tarleton. I've moved to the Upper Los Colonias neighborhood in 1952. So I think I'm the oldest one that's still there. And this is an appeal by certain members of the Board of Directors of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association and other members of the neighborhood that do not agree with the letter submitted by the majority of the board to the Planning Commission and the more than 30 letters from members of the neighborhood submitted to the County Planning Commission who do not want the All Subs built there. This appeal does not represent... is not representative of the neighborhood. No poll of the neighborhood has ever taken place. And the only... It is only the opinion of certain board members who have taken advantage of the situation. Many newcomers to the neighborhood have taken advantage of the Upper Los Colonias neighborhood bylaws, which, by the way, were written to encourage membership in the board to form it. And they have formed a group that desires to keep the neighborhood relegated to building and selling million-dollar-plus homes and 1-acre-plus lots. This is their way of defining the word "community" as it refers to documents of the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association. These who have lived in the neighborhood for some time define the community in a much broader way. We define our community as a place where we live, raise our children, work, and commit our needs without having to leave the community or the area. We are writing this letter of support for All Subs for two main reasons. One, to traffic argument. It is argued that it will cause a traffic nightmare, that some resident homeowners will have the value of their property and home diminished and their peaceable enjoyment of the property significantly lessened. This is so untrue. First of all, there was a comprehensive traffic study performed that confirmed that the traffic in and out of All Subs will fit in with the intersection of the two highways. Secondly, there are no residences located anywhere near the proposed All Subs. The compatibility are... You meant secondly. The late newcomers to the neighborhood are still insisting that the neighborhood is a rural residential neighborhood and is not compatible with an All Subs. First of all, the All Subs is on commercially zoned land. The entire neighborhood was zoned by majority vote of the residences back in 2003, when I first became a board member. Secondly, it will be buffered by two cannabis farms with retail outlets, a rafting company, a big box lumber and hardware store, a general contractor's office, storage and cabinet shop, a radio station, restaurants, and more. To wit, it is not a rural residential neighborhood anywhere along State Road 150 and 522. My time up?
Time's up. Thank you, Mr. Tarleton.
I just like to say that in conclusion, members of the neighborhood that do not live here full-time, whose house is not their primary home, whose ownership of a house is shared with others, should not be making decisions for the neighborhood and defining our community that they only sometimes live in. Did you hear that?
Thank you. Thank you. Let's please move to the opportunity of the option is Michael Silva.
Good morning. My name is Michael Silva, long-life resident of Taos, a former council member. And I used to sit on the Town of Town Planning and Zoning Commission. One of the things I've learned over my years and by living in Taos is that, for whatever reason, we always have what I call a local minority. They're here to tell you why not to approve an applicant that meets the criteria for the most part. We have to learn to coexist. And how we do that is we mitigate the problems. We try to identify the problems, that's your job, and try to mitigate them, all right? I'd even venture to say that if a billionaire was to buy this particular property and set up shop to give $100 bills away all day long, every day, we'd have people in protest of it, for whatever reason. That's just the way it is. That's not to say that they don't have some good concerns. I've heard some concerns with the sepias, you know, high water table, you know, contamination. Again, you know, we have to learn to mitigate these problems. Septic systems, signage. You know, if you take a look at signage on other buildings and businesses throughout the county, you're going to see that some of the signages are even greater. So if you're going to hold this applicant accountable and hold them to a certain criteria, you better go out and do policing and enforce the code as it is. I mean, I understand that they have to meet a certain criteria. With regard to the septic system, that's an environmental department issue. You're going to have to have that applicant get that septic system permit, and it's going to be part of your approval, I'm sure. So there's ways to make sure that these things are getting done and done correctly. Parking. I heard Mr. Jeff Statter talk about parking. It's a simple process of having the engineer, you know, lay down some more stripes, identify where that parking can be to meet that criteria. Again, we have to learn to coexist. And all kinds of problems can be mitigated. I don't want to discount the neighborhood association and their concerns. They have some great concerns. I did hear one gentleman say that he would like to, you know, have Los Colonias not change, all right? Well, I too feel the same concerns. I mean, if I felt that way about any newcomers coming in prior to them arriving in Taos and living in Taos, I mean, that's not fair to say or to even do. And it's up to you all to try to figure out that happy medium, a way to coexist. And I am here in support of this project because, quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of hearing all the negativity as far as development goes. I mean, with 8 billion people on this earth, you know, every corner of our earth is growing. We just have to learn to work together and coexist. Thank you.
Thank you, Silva. And next is Monica Gonzalez-Wilder.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioner Farnell. I am Monica Gonzalez-Wilder. I live on 1403 Mill. St. Rogers Road. I am 58 years old, born and raised here in Taos, New Mexico. I am seven-plus generation of this valley. My family is an agricultural family and a construction family. We are the original owners of Taos Gravel Products. We are in support, my family and I, are in support of this gas station. It is a gas station with a convenience store, not a truck stop. As we were in construction for many years until 1991, we relied on the gas station that used to be Texaco Gas. And it was owned by Ernesto Montoya. And that was the only gas station we had up in that area until Mountain View Gas Station came in. And yes, it has moved from the original spot of Texaco Gas Station to the corner, which used to be the corner of Mill. St. Rogers Museum Road. Many people here do not know that Mill. St. Rogers used to come in on the north side of what is Speedway now. It has been diverted and redesigned, and now is where you enter Mill. St. Rogers Road. The Speedway is a hindrance and a traffic issue there where I see that the All Subs coming in with the development and the design is a much more safer corridor for a gas station and a convenience store to be. I am, as I said, in the agricultural industry. I do haul trucks and trailers. I do love recreation. I do love to pull out, my husband and I love to pull out with our seep oil and get out into the mountains and relax a little. So a convenience store that we can access, even just driving our own pickup truck can get in and out of. We don't have it in the northern part of the county. So we are in favor of this. We have known Mr. Boston and his family, my whole life. My father worked for him when he had his lumber mill. He would not be in adventure in this manner if it was a hindrance to our community. He is a community person. He loves the community. He is not here to hurt it. He is a businessman and has been since he was a child born and raised into a self-owned business. I am in favor of it. And I do like the All Subs family. They are family to our youth. Thank you for always supporting 4H, especially in San Miguel County. Thank you very much for always allowing us to have our horse shows at your ranch and always contributing to 4H. Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby Ortega.
Mr. Chairman, members of the County Commission. Bobby Ortega, I'm a lifelong resident of Costa. I'm a small business owner and a rancher, and also retired community banker. I stand here this morning in opposition to the appeal of the proposed All Subs gas station and convenience store. I, on a personal basis, feel that this will be a great addition to the community. It's in the proper location. It's zoned commercial. I think the planning department and the planning board has done their job. And now it is your responsibility to take that recommendation and approve this project. I think a lot of people have spoken about the benefits of this project. I would just like to add that the growth receipts that will be generated from this are something that's much needed in the coffers of the county. I am very disappointed to continue seeing the anti-growth, anti-business sentiment that we see in this community. All that is doing is hurting the people that have lived here all their life and makes it hard. People are coming in with lots of money, lots of capital to do what they want. The local people don't have those benefits. As you may know, All Subs is a staple in the community of Mora. And I think a lot of communities would like to have a business like All Subs in their community. They're responsible. They're well-managed. The Bastian family, what can I say? They've been a staple in this community. Respectable, responsible business owners. So I stand in support for those reasons, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Billy Romero.
Mister Chair, members of the commission, my name is Billy Romero. I'm a business owner. I'm a former Town of Taos Planning and Zoning Commissioner. I'm a current commissioner for Construction Industries for the state of New Mexico and also for the Historic overlay commission, or Historic Commission for the Town of Taos. I'm here to speak in opposition of... I got to phrase this properly, but in other words, we're here in support of the All Subs. And as a business owner and... we're here in support of the OSESs and would, as a business owner and trucking company that delivers product to a lot of these people in rural areas, having a gas station on that side of town is a benefit for us so we don't have to be driving through town. Our office is in town, but it takes us 15, 20 minutes just across town in case we need fuel. Along with a lot of other speakers that have been here talking, we remember up in Las Colonia's when it was a Jeep Trail, when we had our towing company back then, when there was no houses up there. There was no opposition to growth then. Right now, as Mr. Silva stated, the negativity when it comes to bringing in new businesses, job and planning opportunities in the northern New Mexico, we need to start supporting those. As we know, as a Commission and for planning and zoning it did, they're not here to base their approval or denial off of opinion, it's off of fact. We have the zoning regulations in place for a purpose. It's up to this Commission now to follow through with what planning and zoning did. As a former member of planning and zoning, when we make a decision, we've really looked into it, we've made sure that it meets the criteria, that it meets everything that the Commissions have put forth in the community or municipality. You have a tough job in front of you, and we, those of us who have served on it realize that. Some of us have been victimized by vandalism over decisions that we've made from planning and zoning or from the council or commission. I hope that doesn't happen here, and I hope these businesses, as they get to be built, do not become a victim of vandalism. And if we get away from the negativity, and you guys all have concerns, as I look at you, they're foul. We do business with a lot of you here, and we want to continue to do that, but just because we sit on opposite ends does not give somebody the authority to vandalize businesses. This is the way to do this. Speak it, get your points out and get your, I don't want to say get your emotions out, but let's start thinking about how we're going to do this, and let's do it legally without seeing what happened with the Starbucks building or with other buildings that have been vandalized because it wasn't approved by a few. As we say, ninety percent of the people, I mean, the ten percent of people give us ninety percent of our problems. So let's just represent the other ninety percent that come to here today. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the people who signed up to speak in opposition of the appeal. John?
I've got your mic and your talk.
Okay, we'll give you three minutes.
Opposition?
You're speaking in opposition of the appeal?
No.
Okay, then that's coming up.
Oh, sorry. I got that.
Okay, okay. We'll move on then. And this is now people speaking in support of the appeal. So first we have Ernesto and Delores Montoya. Montoya?
Good morning, Commissioners. Before I begin, I'd like to make a request. I actually signed up twice because there are two separate entities that own property within the boundary of the OSESs, and I'd like to give them adequate time, so if I could combine the two slots together. My name is John Michael Duran. And you're speaking on behalf of the Ernesto and Delores Montoya Trust, as well as the Julian A. Montoya Trust.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. My name is John Michael Duran. I reside at 1640 Paseo de Pueblo Norte, within the 1,000-foot boundary of the proposed OSESs. I am the grandson of Ernesto and Delores Montoya, and the great-grandson of Juan Jose JJ and Juanita Montoya. I'm also the trustee of the Ernesto and Delores Montoya Trust, as well as the Julian A. Montoya Trust, who I am speaking on behalf of today. We have lived on, farmed and worked the same land for over five generations. I believe our family through our trusts represents the largest land and property owners along the west side of Paseo, between 500 and 5,000 feet south of the proposed OSESs. This includes residences, open land and farmland, the Guadalupe Credit Union Building, as well as the existing Speedway, just a block south from the proposed project. My family has always been focused on modest development that benefits the needs of the El Prado community. In the 50s, my great-grandfather JJ recognized the need for the community to have a service station, and thus opened a Texaco. In the 80s, my grandfather Ernesto modernized the station. It was family-owned and operated until my grandfather retired and then leased it out to a local New Mexican company, but our family still retains ownership over the building and the land. In the 90s, my grandfather observed the community's need for access to postal mail as well as banking services, and thus built both the existing buildings that provide the services to this day. However, if you notice, all our commercial properties are purposefully much smaller and lower-key than what exists within the larger Town of Taos, so as to be more representative of our semi-rural community that we strive to protect to this day. In 2021, I followed the same tradition when I negotiated for a new financial institution to lease and operate our bank building, and thus concentrated my efforts toward locally-focused banks and credit unions. Ultimately, I chose, personally chose, Guadalupe Credit Union due to their outstanding record of striving to provide financial empowerment within the community they serve, and their efforts have not gone unnoticed. The existing proposal for OSESs is the extreme opposite of that intent and guidance exemplified by our ancestors through generations. It will be the largest fuming station in all of Taos County, situated in what is a traditionally and historically rural neighborhood, does not fit the proportional and modest standards nor the character of El Prado. Despite what was stated previously, as of 2019, OSESs is not a New Mexico company. They are currently owned by Brookwood Financial Partners, hence the BW, out of Beverly, Massachusetts. They will own the land, building and business, thus directing the majority of the profits out of the local area. This is not within the nature of the community we struggle to preserve. As many of you may have noticed over the past several months since the announcement of this proposed project, we have experienced increased semi and work truck overnight parking lining the shoulders on either side of Paseo from Toribios all the way to the old blinking light. They have impeded visibility to drivers, blocked access to our properties, and left behind trash that has undoubtedly led to more need for us as property owners to clean up. As the OSESs Real Estate Coordinator Andrew Beischlein stated at the P&amp;Z hearing, this site has no truck parking. Yet, they want to attract more trucks to frequent the station 24/7. This station alone will encourage more semi-trucks, trailers and overnight haulers traveling north to bypass the Town of Taos gas stations to get a few more miles in before filling up and then parking overnight up and down the shoulders of 64, 522 and 150. Also, as we all know, the old blinking light intersection is the site of many tragic and fatal car accidents. While this project may or may not inherently increase the number of passenger vehicles traveling through the area, it will substantially increase the overall traffic required to traverse the old blinking light intersection because of the abnormal traffic patterns that patrons of OSESs will be required to travel due to the state's Department of Transportation's restrictions regarding this new development. This action conveys that this project is too large and non-conforming with regards to the community it exists today. And just real quick to wrap up, this development will obviously also threaten our family's local and historic gas station, as it is only a block away and uniquely different in size and structure. To prevent being put out of business, I would be required to come back to this body in the future for a quest to allow an increase in the size of our station just to maintain competitive viability. This project will undoubtedly transform the El Prado community forever, as more and larger corporations will now have tangible examples of the doors to our rural community being opened for larger-scale development. I urge you to approve this appeal and reject the completely outsized, incompatible and locally undesirable project in our recognized traditional historic community of El Prado. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may, I'd like to submit to the record of, so if I may approach. Okay, go ahead. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Well done, Michael.
And I would just like to state that my name is Michelle Montoya Cozal. I live at 47 Lusa Monte in Lower Las Colonia's. However, I'm also here to represent my parents, who live at 1637 Paseo de Pueblo Norte, and they are within that 1,000-foot boundary of the new gas station. And I'm also, along with John Michael, part of our family, who we've been here for five generations on that land. My family's been here for way more longer than that, so. Commissioners, thank you for listening to the concerns of community members. First, I'd like to speak on behalf of my folks who have lived on the northeast side of the OBL intersection for over 60 years in the home they built. My cousin, John Michael Duran, and I represent our family, who have lived and worked on this land for more than five generations. And I will say, I'm the one granddaughter who worked farming on the land, and I worked at the original gas station as a mechanic apprentice. When my parents received notification of the gas station being built, they wanted to see the south side OSESs. I explained the proposed station would be bigger, have more pumps, have three diesel lanes, and would be open 24/7. When we got home, they just looked defeated. My dad said to me, if we had wanted to live in the middle of town, we would have built a house there. My folks are concerned about the noise that will come from the increased traffic, and they believe that the bright lights will also greatly impact their home and what they cherish most, the calmness and peacefulness of the night. My dad, who surveyed many properties in Taos, expressed to me that the current intersection is not set up for traffic coming in and out of the corner. He pointed out that the exits will likely result in more accidents, which will increase noise from responding emergency vehicles. What we all know about the OBL intersection is it's fully stacked with panhandlers on every corner asking for money, saying they're traveling, looking for work, disabled, starving artists, trying to get home, and my favorite, just need to buy weed. We have had to remove trash, tents and the contents that homeless people leave behind. And sadly, we've had to work with law enforcement to check for possible deceased people in the area more than one time. Circumstances have created this mess. However, I'm concerned that bringing in a 24/7 business will increase this type of population at the intersection. Also, there will be the problem of the OSESs selling alcohol, which will undoubtedly add further problems. Our family has had to take action to keep our parents and grandparents safe, installing fencing, gates, signage, cameras and working to establish property boundaries. The current businesses at the OBL intersection have low-impact lighting. Businesses conduct it inside the buildings and may close through the evening at a set time. The area is still primarily a residential area. I live in what I'm Austin. I live in Lower Las Colonia's area, but the altitude is high enough to have a wonderful view of Taos. If your eyes span the landscape, you look to the east and see a small collection of sparkling lights for the downtown plaza. Then you continue to span to the north side, the lights are fewer. You can see the ceiling of the mountain, and you can watch and experience the calmness of the nighttime. The area is on the edge of El Prado, traditional historic district established to show the neighborhood remains an historic area.
Okay, mister, you have exceeded the time. Go ahead, just wrap it up in three seconds.
Finally, I'm asking that you take a moment and visualize the intersection of Paseo de Pueblo Sud and Paseo de Canyon. This area has 24 hours of light and the company. Take a moment and visualize the OBL intersection. This area still has the calmness and darkness of an area where a rural residential community resides. The two are night and day. Do we really want them to be day and day? Once this happens, the center of the area is gone. We would have changed a part of what makes Taos, built Taos. Thank you for your time, and I'd also like to give you a copy of my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. And again, please, share your thoughts, summarize and get your, whatever you need to say, within thirty, within twenty minutes. Next on the list is Tobin Clark.
Good morning. My name is Tobin Clark. My wife Kathy and I live at 27 West Road, El Prado. As you pass through this intersection, through going northward, West Road is on the 500-yard intersection by Ted Schupach's veterinary clinic. We have several dozen homeowners in our neighborhood. Everyone in our neighborhood must enter and exit via West Road onto Highway 522. This exit and entrance to the OSESs will probably be less than 200 to 300 yards from our road that we must use every day to get into and out of our neighborhood. It's going to be a traffic problem for us as these trucks trying to get in and out. This proposed OSESs is completely incompatible with our semi-rural neighborhood. Our house and many of our neighbors overlooks this property. You have seen the pictures of what this truck stop will look like at night. You know how noisy it will be. You have heard about the, our home and many others on West Road will have a direct view of this project and will directly. There is no substantial public interest that would justify granting a special exemption to OSESs. There is over no reasonable justification for not granting a special exemption. You've heard today, it said, the Neighborhood Association is against everything. This is not true. There is a cannabis growing business going in near this intersection. There are restaurants and small businesses near that intersection. They have minimal outdoor lighting. There's the Ace Hardware and the other businesses that go in that very large building. Their parking lot has no outdoor lighting. Why? Because they're not going to open after dark. The gravel plant across from the intersection is not open 24/7. The other businesses there are not open 24/7. They don't, they do not have blazing lights polluting the night sky. It simply is not true that the neighborhood is against everything. We are against this OSESs because it is extremely intrusive and very different from the other businesses in the neighborhood. I want to say this politely and respectfully, but common sense tells you that this is not compatible with this neighborhood. It's, I just urge you to please reverse the decision of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Phillips.
We couldn't do. 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 And then that moves within two, within one thousand feet in the ten-year, so the decade, the period of time that they were covering. This is a twenty-seven pump station. If I just double those numbers, what ends up happening is at two thousand feet, you have spillage from the gasoline pumping activities. So I wanted to share that information with you because what it means is that everyone of our wells is potentially contaminated. The aquifer is contaminated. And they already discussed what's happening with the asechia that is feeding the aquifer. Not adequate clearance from the pumps to the asechia. So those were the main things I wanted to say. I thank you so much for your time. This is a lovely location. I never envisioned it having a twenty-four-hour gas station on it. I've lived up there fourteen years, and that doesn't qualify me as a longtime resident, but I have been there fifteen, fourteen years. Thank you so much. I would give my point to somebody else.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Terry Wyatt Williamson. I'm a proud homeowner of a lovely, quiet home that sits on one point two acres wide up on that bluff, just sixteen hundred feet probably north where the allsops is proposed. I see a lot of my neighbors in here who agree with me that this project is completely incompatible with our rural and semi-rural setting, and will be a disruption to our well-being and our ability to enjoy our home as we have in the past, and will, I believe, cause a loss in value to my home because no longer will our setting be idyllic, but will, on the contrary, bring with it a slew of problems, pollution in various forms, loitering, panhandling, other possible nefarious activity, such as burglary, robbery, and the like, directly into our neighborhood. I wish you could have heard the full presentations from our side. These people are testiners. They've spent countless hours on their research and have presented valid arguments that show that this use is not compatible with various county ordinances that are already in place. I am a court reporter, on those old machines that write down what people say in the courtroom. I spent forty-five years working in the legal profession. To dismiss all of those arguments could be an issue in lawsuits for the county down the road. Once the public finds out that their ordinance is being violated and a wreck occurs or a pedestrian gets injured, you can bet the attorneys will be looking for the deepest pockets to sue, which is where Taos County would be named. It appears Taos is becoming a gas station mecca. Just in the last few years, we've had numerous gas stations pop up. And now, more and more with cars becoming electric, battery-operated vehicles, less and less gas stations will be needed. And a lot of these gas stations we already have will not survive, and they will go belly up. If so, then he will remediate the soil, the groundwater, the topography, these out-of-business entities, no. The oil conservation division? All we have to do is look north to Cresta to see how long remediation takes, years. And who suffers in the meantime, the people of Taos County? So why subject ourselves to unnecessary calamity when we clearly have the ability and wherewithal to avoid it? I cannot emphasize to you enough that we do not want this in our neighborhood. I hope you will consider us the homeowners when making this important decision. And I would urge you to please not make a mistake by turning Taos into another concrete jungle for our sake, for the sake of the wildlife, for our kids' sake, and for the sake of those who will come after us. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Helen Bright.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Helen Bright. I live on West Road in El Prado. I can see the old blinking light from the windows. What I'd like to talk about is your own land use rules. Everybody knows that the land that we are talking about has been zoned as commercial in the neighborhood. But the county has rules about what commercial properties can be built, where they can be built, and when there are too many of them. In Land Use Rule twenty eighteen dash two, one point two point two, you specify that the county will regulate residential and commercial locations and densities, regulate traffic, and encourage the compatible use of land. Compatible. What does that mean? It is not subjective. On page twenty-three of the county's land use regulation that I just mentioned, the county has a definition of incompatible use. It is a use that is inconsistent with or otherwise inappropriate to the existing land uses surrounding the proposed site. That's what you have to look at. So what are the existing land uses surrounding the allsop site? You have a rural area, a large residential area with homes and condo units. You have land where the pueblos hold their ritual rabbit hunts. It is owned by the Pueblans on one fifty. You have businesses that Eugenia spoke about and, which are in commercial zones. And, but these are unique to Taos and to this area. All of them are local businesses, none with troubling issues like allsops would bring. Because BW Gas and Convenience chose a neighborhood to locate its gas station and convenience store, your regulations at four point six point one require that the development is to be sensitive and consistent with the existing traditional and historic uses in the neighborhood. It can't be. It is a mega gas station and a convenience store. It also states in four point six point one that if the development can't be consistent with existing traditional and historic uses in the neighborhood, the development has the burden to prove that this allsops would provide a substantial benefit to, or support to, the neighborhood. They have not. Please review four point six point one because that tells you what you're, what you have to, what they have to prove and what you have to do. And I believe that you should deny their application. Thank you.
So, Edah Hart and Judy Caton. Judy.
Good morning. I live at, I'm Judy Katzman. I live at Twelve Day Lane in El Prado, which is, let me see, it's just west of the intersection, just behind Blueberry Hill. And for my residents, I can clearly see all the bright lights from Taos, center of Taos. The new Mavericks, the new allsops have lit up the night sky. My, my primary concerns about this project are the twenty-four-hour light pollution, well contamination, and also the potential for mischief, for crime. It's, it's disheartening to me. And I know that this sounds like an emotional appeal, but I do believe that all the evidence that you've heard this morning puts it in much more of a concrete context than you need to consider. This whole thing sounds great for a, an interstate highway, but not for our community. I understand the opposing views that it would be great to have something to, a place to go for gas for the truckers. I get that. But I can't agree that it should be twenty-four hours and it should have its horrendous size and scope. That is what's really disturbing to me. I hope that you commissioners will take into account not just the viewers of the Upper Las Colonias Neighborhood Association, but all of El Prado. You've heard from a lot of people by petitions, letters, and, of course, I just live in El Prado. I'm not part of the, the whole community organization. We used to have one in Lower Las Colonias. I don't know what happened to it. But you've been presented with a lot of opposition. Excuse me, I do have a vocal tremor. It's not that I'm nervous. But anyway, just listen to everybody here, please. And I hope you will oppose the allsops or at least require dramatic, dramatic revision so that it becomes in scale with our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've had a request for a five-minute break, and we do have a number of people that still want to speak. And so, we will be here for a while. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Womato.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bashford, five-minute break. Madam Clerk, please call law.
Commissioner Womato. Commissioner Womato.
Also, if you still sign up to speak, because I suspect that there are others here. I drove from thirty-five miles away from the west side of the county.
We'll, we'll look at that after we get, when we get to the point to people that have signed up. So, okay, we're on a five-minute break. We're going to help out. We're going to order you guys for the trip.
I'm going to try.
No, they left.
Yeah.
You're the same too. Sorry, I missed my time.
I don't know if they're gonna break the law.
You don't know?
Yeah, we don't know.
They intend to.
Okay. Okay, we have our clerk back. We have a motion in a second on the floor to come back to open session. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Vamel.
Yeah.
Commissioner Vamel.
Yes.
Commissioner Bash.
Yes.
Thanks for your much good interest.
Yes.
Chair Vamel.
Yes. And just as a caution out here, we do have at least 30 more that are on the list to speak. So we will be holding very hard and fast of the three minutes, three minutes to speaks. So again, let us give wind for their diligence on that. And we'll move forward with the next speaker being Stuart Weintraub.
Good morning. I'm Stuart Weintraub. I've lived in,
Howard.
I've lived in Taos for 30 years, been a homeowner in El Prado on Painter Road for 25 years. I first learned about this project in early September when there was an article in the Taos News, front page article, unanimous decision and all that. I knew nothing about it. I didn't attend the meeting on July 25th because I missed the only notification. The only notification about this meeting was a little legal notice in the Taos News. It might be good if the planning department could publish something a little bit more widely, especially when it's a project like this that's so significant. In any event, I watched the video of it and the pro, the pro ALSAPS people had a team and there was a smattering of Las Colonias people. And it was really interesting. But I was very kind of surprised at a couple of things in the meeting. First of all, the ALSAPS representatives and their supporters claimed repeatedly that they were in New Mexico company. And I know that someone mentioned it before, but they were sold five years ago. And they are now part of, owned by a private equity firm with $4.5 billion in assets. So all during this presentation that they made, it was where this old New Mexico people were great and all that. So that was one thing that bothered me. The other thing was they, they probably claimed that they would add $75,000 per year to the county gross receipts taxes. Yet they went on to describe that the station, the proposed station, as taking business from existing gas stations, not generating new revenue. So are they siphoning businesses from other gas stations? Or are they adding new traffic that actually increases the gross receipts tax? And when asked about this, the ALSAPS representative stated, and I quote, "I would say that in this situation, the dollar is staying in New Mexico because we're a New Mexico business." But that really doesn't answer the question. What bothers me is that he knows he works for a Texas company. He knows it will take revenue from the businesses, businesses like Hale Creek. And he knows it won't contribute new tax revenue. What else might they have left out? Private equity firms are sophisticated financial engineers. They do projections and they build models all day long. When they, they know where the revenue comes from. And when they say, when they say it won't contribute to taxes or will, it's not an honest mistake.
Thank you, Mr. Weintraub. Okay. Thank you. Martha, Martha Gosman.
I want to talk about the intersection of Highway 64150 and 522. I wonder how many people in this venue were in Taos like we when the intersection was known as the way of blinking light. I owned property in El Prado when the time came for that intersection to undergo a major change. It would not only have been blinking yellow caution lights, but it would begin to blink red and green stop and go lights. I remember what a fear it caused. It was probably ready for a change in the interests of public safety. But it wasn't easy for us. I remember that I wrote a piece to your town in the Taos News, paying homage to the so-called old blinking light. Now here today I am, today going public about a proposed change at that intersection, having an ALSAPS truck stop. In my opinion, this is no place and time for the intrusion of property of this nature. I have owned property in Taos since 1970, about a mile from that intersection. I was attracted to this area because of its rural feel and its proximity to Taos Pueblo land. The property seemed like it belonged to a ranch. Indeed, some of it once belonged to an old timer named Frank Brooks. The property was close enough to downtown Taos with all its aesthetic and artistic amenities, without the commercial trappings. This intersection is no place for ALSAPS. Do we want to have our homes near a commercial strip like the one that now occupies Acel de Pueblo Sur? Surely the ALSAPS could become the start of something which would have a finish like that. For us to live in this area, the last thing we want to see is the blaring lights of an ALSAPS gas station. The last thing we want to hear is the grinding sound of diesels pulling in and out to gas up. What kind of smell and pollution would we be asked to tolerate from this gas station? The threat of the air and water in this area in which we live. I repeat, this is not the time or the place for an ALSAPS. I beg you to do rather do best. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexander Robb. Alexander Robb? Not here. Okay. We want to, Robert Zanny? I think it's Robert. Zanny? Mr. Zanny? Pardon? Okay, thank you. Move on to Karen. Karen Bell. I'll let you pronounce. Yeah. I'll let you pronounce your last name.
The voiding commissioners. There's not a lot I can say because my neighbors and friends have pretty much touched on all the important points. I do feel like this project is not compatible with our neighborhood. We're not against progress, obviously, but the noise pollution, traffic, crime, lights are all concerned. The only thing I wanted to say, and I'll make this really fast. Our daughter Lindsay is an environmental engineer and she works for the Environmental Protection Agency. And the bulk of her projects are cleaning up contaminated soil. It's a very real concern, especially for all of us who are on well water. Once you find out it's leaked and it's contaminated, there's not a lot you can do. Plus, the oosechia and the water that is needed to irrigate crops is also very sacred to this land and the people here. So I really urge you to consider all of our concerns. It's, it's not really emotional. It's actually very practical. I like to say I also buy my gas at Montoya all the time and there's never a line or wait. So even when the pumps were run into by someone's car, you still had no wait. And that's only eight pumps and it was down to six pumps. So I'm not sure they're going to make a whole lot of revenue from this station, maybe with the trucks. But anyway, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being so to the point. We are getting repetitions. Thank you. There's another over the same last name. And make sure the first name. Reggie? Is it? Okay, you're passing. Okay. We'll move on to Ms., make sure the first name here. Bass is the last name.
Ari Stoke.
Ari Stoke. Okay. We move along now. Sally. Sally, come ahead. And please state your last name. We can't read it.
Sally Owens. It's 30 Valerio Road North in El Prado. Good morning. It's no morning. And you'll have to forgive me. A part of what I'm going to say is emotional. And I did know that the feelings that you have about your home and your environment are not legitimate. I moved to Taos County from Las Vegas in 2003. I bought a property with a house and two casitas on the crest of a hill above Lower Las Colonias Road. I live in one house and rent out the other two. During night hours, my renters and I are all considered of one another and our neighbors and only turn on porch lights when we go out at night or when we go outside to get something we've left in our cars or walk a pet, for example. Then we turn the outside light off. This is because we all appreciate the night skies we can see clearly in our neighborhood. It is beautiful. I even named the property Lunavista and was so proud of my county. The only lights we can see at night are the old blinking light and three lights from the new Ace Hardware complex, certainly necessary. But if you allow 24-hour truck stop or pause, I don't, what are we calling it? The gas station with these intense lights will be definite light pollution for all of us on Valerio Road North and for all the roads perpendicular to us. I was recently asked by the county to photograph every light source on the outside of my property and to indicate which ones we use and which ones we have disconnected. I was told that it was to check that we're in compliance with dark skies. As I said, we are already monitoring that. Please consider the topography of the land and the thousands of people you will impact on Blueberry Hill, our hill to the west of it, and the folks who have just built nice homes on the corner of Highway 64 and Lower Las Colonias. The 24-hour lights will shine directly into our eyes and houses. Please let's have some consistency. If you build a truck stop with lights people can see for miles, not just blocks, your message is that you not care about the dark skies policy. If you can destroy the ambience with this commercial endeavor and start down the path to big city style lighting and business like Cereals Road in Santa Fe, we won't need the moon to grope our way around in our yards. I guess we'll just all apply for floodlights on our property. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurie Ballyett.
Hello, I'm Laurie Ballyett. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I ask you to rescind your decision because it violates Taos County ordinance 2006-9 Light Sky Protection Act, particularly light pollution and light trespass. It says this ordinance will ensure aesthetically appropriate outdoor lighting in keeping with the historic character and night sky beauty of Taos County. The light from this unnecessary 24-pump, 24-hour gas station with a convenience store on the corner of where it is, old blinking light, it will affect not only the Upper Colonias neighborhood, it will affect the nearby Pueblo lands, the Melissa Rogers Museum and its neighborhood, Avery Hill, the Harris area, Arroyo Seco, including Des Montes and El Salto, and even parts of Arroyo Hondo. It will affect the now historically designated village of El Prado that this board approved in 2021. When the large speedway north of Taos in El Prado went up years ago, I lived on the Harris Road. I recall the shock of all of, of all of us in the neighborhood when the glaring lights changed the skyline for good. We were in disbelief that the county allowed this violation. I still live in this area and we all can see the light pollution roaming our night sky, even when we look out at the horizon at 2:00 AM from well over three miles away of the source. This new retail gas station will be significantly brighter than the one, than that one and much closer. Also, this is not a gas facility that creates an exception to this ordinance. It is a retail gas station and convenience store, but for even with many other important opposing reasons, there is nothing preventing you from denying the S U P if only for the Night Sky Protection Act. This is a permanent change to our rural area. Please use your good judgment and reverse your permit approval, not only for the light, but because of the water, the crime, the traffic, the noise and the decreasing values of real estate. Please use your good judgment and reverse your permit approval. If you are not careful, the now rural El Prado will grow into an unrecognized, unrecognizable echo of a Spanish strip on 68 when you're driving down to Santa Fe. Or in the very least, it will become similar to the Isor of the strip on the south of Taos, which we know many neighbors down by the U N M, of course, complain about the gas station lights that are there now. So thank you for your time.
Susan Ballehart. Not, okay. Warren, Warren E. S P C H E R. Warren.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you. I, I really treasure these moments to participate in a democracy. It is a, it's an honor and a great privilege. Thank you again. Some of us reach an age where we begin to think about what will be the legacy that we leave, our children, our grandchildren and their grandchildren. Not everybody reaches this state of awareness at the same time, same point in age, but sometimes we do, those of us who have, take it rather seriously. Now, let's skip on to ALSAPS. ALSAPS is a purveyor of fossil fuel. There are women about that. That's their major profit center, of course. So they are really nothing more than a front, if you will, and that with a mask on for big oil. For big oil. Now what has big oil got to do with? Now, what has big oil got to do with this new station of the road? Well, big oil has contributed and we are complicit as users of that product in the degradation of the environment. Let me give you one example, two, there are two examples that stand out. This past week, the old village of Asheville, North Carolina was virtually destroyed by a hurricane of the remnants of Hurricane Hilly. Now, big oil wouldn't invent hurricanes, but it certainly, the use of fossil fuel is contributing to the intensity and the greater frequency of these huge storms. Now, what's that got to do with Allseps of the Road, the proposed new station? In sustaining that type of development is sustaining and even encouraging the use of fossil fuels into the future. Do you guys want to be a part of that? I hope not. Now, you have an opportunity here. This is a Chinese proverb about the opportunity and the challenge. The opportunity here for the county of Taos Commissioners is to make a statement that no, we are not going to continue to support the distribution of fossil fuels. I can't emphasize it strongly enough. If you guys make that kind of a statement, it's almost guaranteed that the New York Times will pick up that story. They will say, here is a, here is a county way back in the backwaters of New Mexico willing to take a stand against big oil and the future degradation of, for the future, the degradation of our environment for our children and our grandchildren and generations to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ross, Ross speaking.
He's not speaking.
What is it?
He is not speaking.
Nothing, okay. Judy, Judy Tupton Katsman. All right, okay. John, John Sandwell.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name is John Sandwell. My wife and I own a place in El Prado on Pueblo Road. And we spend half our time in Taos and half in California. My family's roots in Taos go back to the 1700s in northern New Mexico to the 1600s. And I would like to make a bold emotional appeal. I think emotions are good. We lost a Taos icon, John Nichols, who wrote the Malabar Beanfield War in the 70s about this very issue. And so, being a songwriter, I wrote a little song and I'd like to sing it for the council. I dreamed that Sardro Mondragon was live as you will be. He was watering his bean fields where the gas station will be. It's a Malabar Beanfield War. Round two has come to town. Old John Nichols is spinning in his grave. If there's money to be made, an asphalt to be laid, filthy lucre will always get its way. To hell with the past, she's for sale at last. Strip the sagebrush from her breast. Zopelotes in their suits, cowboy hats and pointed boots. They're greasing greedy palms along the way. They'll be happy when it's done. Take the money and run to hell with you and me. If there's money to be made, an asphalt to be laid, filthy lucre will always get its way. To hell with the past, she's for sale at last. Strip the sagebrush from her breast. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, John. Juan, Juan Sandwell? Oh, Juan Valdez, I'm sorry. Juan Valdez. Did he leave? I saw him earlier.
Thank you, Juan.
Okay. Allegra Houston, Allegra Houston.
Good morning, good afternoon. I live in Des Moines, probably four miles, I don't know, as the crow flies from this Allseps. And I've lived in Taos for 26 years. I'd like to start by querying the definition of gas station versus truck stop. The Allseps folks have made a big deal about the fact that there are no parking bays for big rigs. Therefore, it's not a truck stop. However, they count the pump side spaces in their own parking arrangements. So are they or are they not? But regardless of that, as John Michael Duran pointed out, the trucks just park along the side of the road. So trucks are stopping there. In my view, that makes it, by common sense, a truck stop. George Bastian said this, and I'm quoting him here. This is bigger than the Upper Las Colonia's Neighborhood Association. He is completely right. This affects all of Taos and it's very damaging. But first, the benefits. Yes, the convenience store. Yes, the place for farmers to be able to gas up. Neither of those things requires dusk to dawn floodlighting as bright as an operating room, which you will hear about in a moment, and an illuminated sign of indeterminate height because they're not admitting what it is. Everybody knows this is going to be there. So who's looking at this sign? The local residents. Okay, jobs. Let's do gross receipts first. So gross receipts. Again, the Allseps people are playing a double sided game with this. Andrew from Allseps earlier said, we're aiming to capture existing traffic. We're not bringing any new traffic. Well, that means no new gross receipts. It doesn't matter if I buy my gas at Speedway or the Allseps. What difference does it make? Then they say, oh, we're contributing $75,000 a year to the gross receipts. So which is it? Jobs. Yes, it will create some minimum wage jobs. Any local business owner will tell you the problem is not lack of jobs, it's lack of people to fill those jobs. So will it generate any other jobs? Well, very likely prostitution, which is a big feature of truck stops. Even if they're parked along the highway, it's still a truck stop. Maybe that's even better because there won't be so much lighting. You could also go on the human trafficking online website and see that 24 hour truck stops are a major conduit for human trafficking. So is this really what we want to invite into Taos County and encourage? I don't think so. So, many disheartening remarks have been made about emotion. I'm not going to apologize for speaking with emotion because the quality of life is determined by emotion. People's tourism decisions are determined by emotion. That's what brings money into the county. I love that place. I want to go there. So that brings me to the Destination Stewardship Plan, which a great deal of money has been spent on. And this is the way to safeguard what makes Taos special, which is our greatest economic asset. This is the smart way to bring money into the county. Protect the cultural heritage, the aseca's. The rules is quiet. I will finish very soon. Protect the dark skies.
You've exceeded your time.
Okay, I'm not done. The changes made by the planning department are a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. And make no mistake, this is a bullet wound in the dark skies and the V shed and the quality of life in this part of the county. Nothing that has been given as benefit is worth this damage permanently. Thank you.
Alicia Mason Miller.
Hello, my name is Alicia Mason Miller and I live in the county. I'm opposed to the truck, the truck fuel stop because a 24 hour truck fuel stop is an invitation to more truck traffic in Taos. Taos County roads are too narrow and the gorge bridge is inadequate for more truck traffic. The bridge was broke 60 years ago as of 2025. Since then, trucks have gotten heavier, wider and longer. The federal weight limit is 80,000 pounds, but New Mexico once extended the limit to 86,000 pounds. However, the only mandatory weigh station is at the state border. Without a weigh station at the bridge, it is impossible to determine the number of trucks and the weight of the trucks crossing. According to the New Mexico Department of Transportation, the bridge was built to withstand truck traffic, but it was never contemplated that it would be 24/7. The effect of climate change on bridge construction is now a subject of national study as reported on September 2nd, 2004 in the New York Times article called, "Climate Change Can Cause Bridges to Fall Apart Like Tanker Toys." Bridges that have passed inspection are not exempt. The gorge bridge is the lifeline to Taos's outline communities. Please do not allow the proposed truck station. Thank you.
Thank you. Quaking. What was the last name?
Luke Quaking Love. Love. Is it Quaking Love? He's not. May I take this time and interview you about this?
You get an opportunity at the end of your don list. Okay, S. S F Honda? S F. Oh, there he is. Oh, I'm sorry.
I've not been sworn in. Yes, I do. Affirm that I will speak the truth.
Stevens, do you swear an oath under oath and penalty allow that the testimony about to give is true and factual?
I do, Valerie.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to say something first about self governance. I want to say something first about self governance and I want to applaud the effort of the people, the community in Upper Las Colonia's in terms of self governance. They've educated themselves, they've looked at the local regulations. That's the beginning, right? It's a self governing community. The first gentleman that spoke about loving Taos and was part of his backyard and that they would be providing fresh meats and groceries. Are the people in this community going to be able to afford the fresh meats and the groceries sold in that convenience store? What kinds of jobs are they going to provide? They talk about providing $75,000 worth of gross receipts tax over the course of the year. $75,000 is approaching what would be a living wage in this community, only approaching what would be a living wage. So what are the wages of the people that are going to be working there? Are these living wage jobs? No, they're not, I say. Again, back to a little bit on self governance. This is not about negativity. This is about democracy and dissent. These people have the right to speak out. That's not negativity. That's dissent. That's disagreement. That's what a civic culture involves. It involves give and take. I don't remember if it was Plato or Aristotle, but one of them said, the unexamined life is not worth living. We need to examine carefully our lives in this community, our lives as individuals, our lives as a community. There was a question about parking, several questions about parking and about striping. And I believe it was Mr. Silver that said, we have to mitigate the problems and that we can just lay down the strikes, lay down the parking. A good example where that doesn't work out is the Smith's Food Parking Lot. That's one of the worst parking lots I think I've ever seen created. It is much too crowded, much too dense. So I wouldn't consider that a solution, just putting down more parking line, parking stripes. Noise. If anybody has been in the vicinity of the South Side Allseps, the noise is atrocious. You get the, what I call a street culture that reached there and they're revving their engines. And you can hear that revving on the other side of town. You can probably hear it north of town, easily can be heard north of town. So it's going to be an attraction for that kind of noise. Taxes. It was said, and I'm almost finished, that the people who oppose it said that at a D and Z meeting, that the owners, the proponents said that it would not be financially feasible absent 24 hours and absent sale of beer.
The store has spirits.
Just that alone should tell you something. If it's not feasible selling that kind of crap, then it should, it's not, it's not a living wage. It's not, it's not what this community needs.
Thank you. Suzie Schwartz.
First, I want to thank, oops, sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead.
I want to thank all of you for hearing our public testimony and for your often unappreciated service to the community on the myriad of issues and problems and proposals and legislation and everything that you do. Our initial letter of September 20th said, Mr. Jones added to your packets is somewhat confusing and contains a misinterpretation in the traffic plan, which Mr. Jones pointed out to me and my husband Sandy. We amended that letter and the one I'm going to read is the one we'd like you to enter into the record, if you can. So this is from my husband Sandy's experience having driven a big truck with a long trailer and my experience as the passenger. Having driven a semi tractor with a 40 foot trailer over much of the US and Canada and having received the Allseps, reviewed the Allseps type plan presented at the April 9th Upper Las Colonia's Neighborhood Association meeting. We've given considerable thought to the problems the proposed eaglets onto Route 150 will present for tractor trailers and other oversized and large vehicle combinations, especially in regard to public safety. In a best case scenario with zero traffic, getting a tractor trailer with a standard 53 foot trailer into the left hand turn lane onto 150 before the OBL intersection without the tail, the tail of the trailer encroaching into the straight ahead lane would be challenging. In a real life scenario, given average traffic at best, an exiting rig attempting to do the same could cause considerable congestion at this often busy intersection, creating a significant safety hazard. In a wintertime scenario, when large numbers of skiers are returning from the ski valley, creating a long waiting line well before the turn lane even starts, getting a tractor trailer completely into the left hand turn lane or even the straight ahead lane towards 64 West would not only be extremely difficult, causing a traffic gridlock, but would increase the potential for a serious accident. The future development and growth of Upper Las Colonia's and current and planned future development by TSV Inc. will cause a steady increase in traffic on Route 150, further exacerbating the safety situation. Even if, as George Boston stated at December, September 18th, meeting, there won't be that, that there won't be that many rigs utilizing the new Allseps, it will only be a matter of time before a tragic incident occurs. It only takes one. Further, given the considerations above, we urge, we urge New Mexico DOT or whomever the appropriate agency is to reconsider the very real danger the Route 150 eaglet presents and request the developers to come up with a safer plan before the project is allowed to take further steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jeff Stadler.
With your recommendation, Chair, I'm going to come up and just help Jeff.
Okay, you have three minutes. Okay, you have three minutes.
Hello, Gary. So continuation of what Mr. Schwartz was talking about there. One of the more ludicrous things about this Allsups is, the way for these trucks to enter is on 522. And after they fuel up and leave, the, the only way they can leave, the only way they can leave is the right-hand turn onto State Road 150. So if any of these trucks, or RVs, or fifth-wheelers, or anything coming out of there, if a Royal Seiko, or the Taos Ski Valley is their destination, they are going the opposite direction. So how do you correct that? You're going to go west on 64, north on 522, or south on 64, and have to perform an illegal U-turn to come back into the intersection, to use 150 to go into a Royal Seiko or Taos Ski Valley? I don't think we want to encourage this, but that's the only way they can do that while, after exiting this. This is a right-only exit, takes you back through the intersection, you'd have, and you would have to somehow pull a 180 to get to the Taos Ski Valley, Royal Seiko, Desmontes for deliveries. The other thing that's kind of interesting is, they, we keep talking about the state highway permit, NMDOT, and they did look at this. In fact, the applicant changed their drawings three times in the month of August specifically for the purpose of addressing the concerns that NMDOT had. And some of these are on these D cell lanes. So D cell lane basically gives you a way to get off the road without stopping traffic behind you. There's a taper that goes into a full lane, and then you hit your brakes and, and take your right turn. So for the one, so for the one coming on 522 going to Questa, that one there needs to be in length 550 feet, considering the taper plus the full lane. And they, the traffic state, they say specifically, but that would back you up all the way through the intersection. So they, what the, what the permit is, they shorten it, we'll make it, we'll, we'll have to fit it within the space we have. So they basically shortened it by half to, to accommodate the intersection and where they're turning into the Allsups. The same thing applies coming on 150, coming down toward the light. And that one there is the same thing. And speed gets into this too. This, this speed, how it's owned and stuff like this. But as they come down on 150, they need a space of, see if I got this right here. They need 230 feet of full lane, plus 100-foot taper. They need 330 feet to initiate, to come in. And in that, that case also, because of existing driveways, they only have half of that. And the DOT is aware of that. There's constraints where they can do. They issued the permit, but it still doesn't comply.
John, your name is there.
Leslie Hildebrand.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time and your patience today. I know it's been a long day. My name is Leslie Hildebrand. I live at 32 Colonius Point in El Prado. I am a aerospace professional, and I've been that way for about 30 years. So don't confuse my passion for emotion, but I have great passion for our night skies. In 1999, the New Mexico Heritage Preservation Alliance declared the New Mexico sky one of our state's most endangered cultural resources. And in 2006, the town and county of Taos had the foresight to enact their own dark sky legislature. So why does this matter? It matters because you, the leaders, the residents, and the community of Taos have a time-honored position protecting this cherished resource, our ancestral skies. Consequently, this past July, Taos announced a plan to revise this nearly 20-year-old Night Protection Act. Hands down, the new plan is going to look markedly different than it does today, with the evolving technology of LED lights and leveraging what we have learned from other communities that are facing uncharted growth. Now, growth is not inevitable. I understand that. But uninformed growth does not have to happen. The types of light pollution that will be emitted from this new Allsups include direct light trespass, bright light glare, spillage, and light glow. With 58 22,000 lumen canopy lights, nine 30,000 lumen bulbs, and additional 17 lamps, the total brightness of this site is over 1.5 million lumens. This is similar to a high school athletic field, but if you think about that, the high school athletic field usually turns its lights off around 10:00 PM. With this operating on a 24-hour schedule, these extremely bright lights will be lit from dusk until dawn, conflicting with the latest best practices of dark sky zones. Brightly lit areas can have significant harmful impacts to human health, including interrupting circadian rhythms, obesity, sleep disorders, and in some cases, even cancer. Animals and wildlife are also impacted by disruption in migration, hunting, and reproductive behaviors. Even the plants are not going to go unscathed, creating unsuitable flower propagation, disoriented pollinators, and their inability to tolerate drought. And here we are in a drought-prone area. On September 15, our team measured the current quality of dark skies throughout Taos using a sky quality meter. This is a meter that is recognized as a darkness measure for the area. We went to many sites on a clear night and after moonset. The current site where Allsups is proposed came in at about a 21 SQM level, which equates to about an academic A of dark sky rating. The current Allsups on the south side actually came in at an 18.5. So that, and that's a much smaller location. So there's a lot more I could say about that, but you can tell I'm very passionate. There's a lot of data here. If it's in your pocket, please read it. It's very important. Thank you.
Mark. Mark Ashman.
Just a couple of things. I don't know what I have to do for a minute. This is not the scale, okay? Took a couple of days to put it together, but it's nevertheless not a scale of, but I do want to point out where this is. This is the project over here. This is the old, right here. 17,000 acres of bloodloaf trackway. Okay? 17,000. This is a problem. Over here, there's another 38 to 48 years of bloodloaf. This is the historic Dorothy Brett House, right here. I appreciate that. Thank you. You got K-Town. Right over here, you've got those two rabbits in front of the Philip, the rice gallery, those big guys, those red rabbits that are sitting out here. This is very nice territory here. Beautiful architectural history stuff. Big Allsups sitting across the road, right here. Forget it. Okay. Here's something traffic-wise. Department of Transportation has suggested that this median strip that comes up here be extended up here so as to prevent people from making U-turns across and going up here and entering this way. Okay? Big problem. The problem still exists, however, for people coming up and looping over and going in this way. And this cannot be extended any further up because people coming out of K-Town want to be able to turn left and come down here. One last thing I'm going to leave you with. A number. 203. That is the number of exits and entries in vehicles prior. It could be something, a car coming in here, it could be a semi coming out here, it could be the cars coming in and out of that 522. 203 vehicles at the afternoon peak hour. That translates to between three and four entries or exits every minute. This is their projection. Three or four vehicles every minute coming in and out of that place. Way too much. This is already a disaster traffic-wise. This thing here will just make this worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lauren Spaker. Lauren Spaker.
Good girl. Well, we have nowhere else that you put in my side bra to gather about miles of crowflies from, from this intersection, and I lie on my bed at night, at night, and I watch you go red, green, red, green. This is going to be directly in my line of sight. I'm going to have these lights. So I just want to tell you something you haven't heard yet. The total of our online and paper petitions is 2,182 signatures, with with 86% coming from Taos and its surroundings. That is a very high number, for those of you who have heard me cite these numbers in the past. Some people have spoken in favor of the project. They cite convenience as major reason. Compare that to all the reasons you have just heard why this project shouldn't be built. It creates dangerous traffic issues. It pollutes the night skies. It creates noise pollution. Nothing anywhere near is open 24 hours with blazing lights. It isn't in compliance with numerous land use regulations. Don't forget that Ezekiel that isn't 150 feet away. It simply does not fit with the rural and semi-rural landscape of El Prado, and I hope you saw the pictures as they were rolling through. These 2,182 people are asking you to listen to them. They want smart growth. They do not want you to approve this project, which isn't smart growth. We also, that was the end of that part of my presentation. There's a gentleman who has bought, a long time ago, the historic Frida Lawrence property, which is down the hill, around the corner. You actually saw a picture of it sitting on the hill behind the pasture. He wrote a note for me to read it, as required. I'll synopsize it because it will probably have me going over three minutes. But he talks lovingly of restoring the casica and the main house of Frida Lawrence, who was DH Lawrence's wife. She actually died in this house. They have spent a lot of time and money. They already have some encroachment with the lights. But the encroachment from this project will be ever so much worse. They say the beautiful sky view at night will be destroyed. So there you have it from Rex Henderson, who is doing his beautiful duty of preserving and keeping a historic house, as there are other historic houses in the area. So please don't approve this project. It's, it's abominable. Thank you.
David Wilson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Residents. Thank you. I thought about doing my presentation in interpretive dance, but not after John sang that song. I hope to clarify a few things for you. One, those who were in opposition to this project are not anti-development or anti-growth. That's been stated. We are in favor of responsible, compatible growth projects which address a genuine need for the community, and they provide benefit. And this seems to be lacking with this project. The gentleman in the red shirt talked about, well, the other side has a lot of emotional comments that they're making. Yeah, there is a lot of emotion. There's emotion on both sides of this because of the fact that you've got two opposing points of view. The fact that there's some emotion on the side of opposition does not mean, though, that it's not rational or fact-based. You've heard a lot of references to LURs and to ordinances and so forth. So emotionally, yes, but it's fact-based as well. I'm looking for opportunities when, you know, we look at conflict, to look for common ground and where we can agree. So I agree with him that it's emotional. I agree with George when he said, "This is bigger than Upper Los Colonius." It is. That's why you've got so many people outside of the neighborhood footprint that are opposed to this. Marion made some comments about the terms, and I agree with Marion. The terms are one years. What she didn't tell you is that we have, by virtue of the bylaws, officers can serve an unlimited number of terms. So it's one year, but unlimited number of terms. And that's not her fault. She's just misinformed. So I think the key thing is here, we're really looking at something that is just a poor fit for the place. We're not opposed to responsible development. The, Mr. Boston stated at a past board meeting that the board seems intent on trying to tell property owners what they can and can't do. And I've only been on the board a few years, but that's simply not the case. It's not a factual representation. We spend a lot of time looking at LURs and regulations, and we are not opposed to development, or we're not in the business of trying to tell property owners what they can do. It should be noted, by the way, that Mr. Boston attended one of our meetings, I think via Zoom, in the past. And at that time, he proposed the development of a drive-in movie theater for that space. The Upper Los Colonius Neighborhood Association Board was generally in favor of that idea, thought it was quite a creative idea, and we encouraged him around that. We thought it could be an interesting use of that space. The issue here is that we're trying to force-fit something that simply does not fit here. So I would ask you to reject this. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Marion and Linda Romo on the list. Spoke earlier. Are they still here? I don't see them.
No, pretty much.
Okay. 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 Then before we have the presentation by the Planning Department, there were a couple of requests, people that didn't get a chance to get in here in time to sign the list. How many do we have? Oh, we still have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, I guess we'll go with it. Okay. All right. Continue with the ones that, that are speaking in support of the appeal. So come forward, please.
Where do I swear in? I promise to speak the truth.
Do you swear an oath under oath and penalty aloud that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Nan Laney. My name is Nan Laney. I live on the western edge of the county, about 10 miles past the Carson store, up at 285. And I drove here especially for this meeting today. I, partly because I want you to hear, and I was concerned that people might not come from the immediate area, that, as you know, that, it would, like, intersection is used by people coming from long distances away, and those people will all be impacted. I know two people in San Luis, Colorado, that come to Taos for their food and their errands. It's, I met a couple at the farmer's market a couple of weeks ago, and they drove to the Taos farmer's market from Tera Amalia. There's people coming from long distances, coming through that intersection. So I'll, I'll try to make this brief because a lot has already been said, but I feel really strongly that a 24-hour truck stop, convenience store, gas station, and alcohol- strongly that a 24-hour truck stop, convenience store, gas station, and alcohol distribution point is very inappropriate for the old blinking light intersection. It's proposed to consume nearly five acres of land and it's one of the intersections that I consider one of the most hazardous and busiest intersections. I pretty much refuse to drive Highway 150 during the winter months when there's all those out-of-town crazy skiers coming out of the mountains, driving at high rates of speed, thinking they haven't really left the slopes yet. So I'm concerned about really public processes and the challenges we've had with things being rubber stamped and they're not really being transparent public processes. The plaza, Kit Carson Park, the airport, parking meters. I know some of this is Thomas House stuff, but there's been a lot of lack of process. So I appreciate this opportunity to be part of democratic process right now. I think there's a lot of concerns around culture and history or Asequias, the potential for groundwater contamination and drawdown, fragile ecosystems, and then natural abundant beauty that surrounds us that would be impacted by this truck stop, gas station, alcohol distribution point, 24 hours lighting. I don't know if the Taos public has been consulted or how they plan on weighing in, but I'm concerned that I do not see any, a much obvious Taos public presence here today. I counted 11 gas stations driving through town last week. The two largest ones, I believe, are the two newest ones. How many more gas stations do we need in the Taos area? What about climate change and increasing extreme climate events? I missed them. Oil and gas industry is directly responsible for climate change and covering up its effects. Why can't Taos support a less harmful way of living? And I just want to, just before I walk away, I want to touch on the fact that New Mexico has the highest or one of the highest alcohol-related deaths in the country. And this is going to encourage more alcohol purchase at the north end of the county. And lastly, I live on 285. There's already quite a bit of truck parking on 285 near the 567 junction. I have no problem with that, but parking along 64, 522, 150 to rest or sleep is going to greatly increase the traffic hazards in that area. Thank you very much.
Okay. There were a couple other hands that won't speak. Appeal, come forward, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you. Yes, I have. Yes, I've lived here a long time. Yes, I live close to the intersection. Usually everybody that lives around there is opposing, but there's more to it than that. And what I want to point out is two things. One, there was at least a half a dozen issues of non-compliance. Oh, I didn't say my name? Sorry. Joel Wood. I've lived here 54 years. So the non-compliance is a big issue to me, but the bigger one is this, and just when I'm appealing to you as the Commissioners and as residents of Taos, New Mexico. What is your vision for the future of Taos? What's Taos going to look like? Are we just going to give it a free development hand? Go ahead, do whatever you want? I mean, I came here in 71. This was a unique place. It's getting less and less and less unique. There's no stoppage, you know, to keeping it Taos. And this thing is a perfect example of bad development. I mean, I'll leave it at that. I want you to think personally about your town. Thank you.
You guys know me, Cardinal Rieger. I'm not going to take three minutes, but I would like to finish our presentation. One thing that has not been pointed out today is that there is not one single electrical vehicle hookup at this all subs. Not one. No one has mentioned that. Not one electrical vehicle hookup at this all subs, proposed, anywhere. So the Upper Los Colonius Neighborhood, El Prado in Taos County, needs responsible, legal, considerate, and compatible development. We have ordinances and performance criteria in place. They should be followed and enforced. Please stop trying to squeeze big projects onto land that is not large enough to accommodate safe traffic flow and respect the neighboring environment like this proposed all subs does not. In conclusion, it is not comforting to know that we can drink, drive, get high, get in an accident in a vehicle, partake in nefarious activities, and get blinded by the light, all within 500 feet, all day, all night, every day. That is not meeting in the middle. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Todd Thompson. I was not.
Do you swear in a firm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
Yes.
Please state your name.
Todd Thompson. So I've lived in Taos almost 50 years also, and most of that on the north side. I've been president of the Hondo Mesa Community Association, made up of over 120 households for most of the past 30 years. And I feel strongly that this is the wrong project in the wrong place. And number one, I'd like to address the traffic has been addressed, but there are probably, on average, two or three serious accidents at that intersection already. Every month, there's a good 20 to 30 accidents at the old blinking light. Every year, I've lost friends who have died at that intersection. Okay? And I use that intersection every day, as perhaps so much you do also. There's already serious problems with the design of that intersection. Every day, there are near accidents at that intersection. And putting this project on that particular corner, which as Mr. Stadler and others have pointed out, already creates more difficulty, more confusion, and more serious logistical problems at that intersection. There are going to be more accidents. People will die if this project goes in that location, especially the way it's currently designed. And that is on you. Okay? You having approved that project, those accidents, or the increase in those accidents is on this Board of Commissioners. So it's a serious actual life and death decision that you are making. And I would also like to address the fact that this part of Taos, I've noticed on the internet, a lot of discussion back and forth, people saying, people on the north side are anti-development. We need a grocery store on the north side. We need medical services on the north side. We need lots of other types of development. This particular project, we do not need for lots of reasons. And that neighborhood, that area, is already impacted heavily by Taos gravel company's operations, which is a heavy, heavy industrial process that originally was surrounded by a lot of vacant land. Now, 30 years down the road, it's surrounded by residential area that previous Commissioners have approved the zoning of as residential. And you are duty-bound to protect that residential quality of those neighborhoods that have been established and permitted by this body in previous years. And those neighborhoods are already bearing the burden of a major industrial facility right there and adding another major commercial activity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else on supportive appeal? If not. I can't.
She already spoke.
Yeah, you have spoken.
John is still waiting to be. But it is about the Destination Storage Plan, which is not in the special.
Separate from this conversation.
For an open hearing.
The appeal of the high decision to.
I understand that, that position goes against what the Destination Storage Plan is designed to do. A great deal of money and time and effort is spent on that. Approving this gas station blows a hole right into the plan. I wish we had a lot of money spent.
Mr. Kevin, you give it a great deal of lenience to the proponents of the appeal and this request. This lady's already spoken. The representatives for the panel have already spoken. It would be inappropriate to then open it up again for everyone else, because if you open it up for her, you're going to open it up for everyone else. So that would be out of order, so I'm sorry. We can't allow that. But yeah, thank you very much. And we have one more speaker, Mr. John Adams.
Do I, I didn't get sworn in.
Do you swear in a firm under oath and penalty of law that the testimony you're about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Thank you.
So I understand that this is an emotional issue for a lot of people behind me. I've noticed that about 90% of the speakers have hair as blue as mine or bluer. And that makes me wonder, where's the rest of the people? Where's the young people? Where's the people that, why are they not here? Why are the people that drive the trucks?
Mr. John Adams, you have the floor.
Yeah. So where are the people that actually are doing the work today? Where are the truck drivers? Where are the farmers? Where are the ranchers? They're working. That's where they are. And I was quiet for y'all.
Yep.
Excuse me. That, I agree with, to my own self, primarily for my wife, I'm standing up here talking about this thing. But I sat at a team roping in Belen, New Mexico this last weekend that was right next door to your project there. It's not a truck stop, people. It's a three-bay fuel island. And if I can pull my 40-foot stock trailer full of cattle in there and not have to sit there and wait on a Prius to get out of my diesel pump and not hold up four pumps because of the one diesel bay that's there, that's a benefit to everybody. Environmentally, I was in this business. The environmental restraints against these people nowadays is unbelievable. The safety that's instilled in these things today. You want to talk about groundwater and wells? Do some research. Find out what these people have to do to make sure that this thing is safe. On the north side of town, we need some commerce. That man, whoever said that, we absolutely need a grocery store. I don't know why Ace isn't open yet, but we need it. None of those things are going to happen unless we invite other commerce in. You guys know that. There has to be an invitation. There has to be a reason for other commerce to come in. That intersection is nothing but commercial stuff. It's a gravel plant. It's a used junk store. It's a gas station. It's a bar, a restaurant. It's nothing but commercial. So I don't get how this changes the complexion of anything. But if this thing fails, I just want you all to think about something. If this thing fails, I can go buy that land from George Boston, I can build a roping arena on it, and I can put lights up and burn those lights 24 hours a day and I don't need y'all's permission because it's a sports arena. So do you want to deal with somebody like me? Or do you want to deal with a responsible company that is willing to bend and shape that thing into what this community wants? I'm not against what you people are saying, whether you believe it or not. I'm not against it. But there's got to be something that happens in the middle here that satisfies everybody. And ranchers like ourselves, we need to get that Prius out of our way so we can get those cows out of that trailer and get them to market. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Close the meeting for public comment. Have the presentation by Australian Jones for the Planning Department. Go ahead.
Well, good morning. That was the first thing that was on my prepared remarks here, but that's out of the water now. So hello, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You have heard the opponents and the appeals make their respective cases for why the Planning Commission's decision regarding SB USE 24-004 should be reversed, affirmed. You have another option, which would be to affirm with conditions. I will now discuss regulatory processes that planning staff employed in working with VW Gas Convenience and their agents at Well Engineering on the original application for SB USE-24-004 and provide some comments related to the compatibility standards that are a primary focus of this appeal. Conditions applied to the special use permit as approved by the, excuse me, as approved by the Planning Commission include requirements of the applicant to obtain access permits from the New Mexico Department of Transportation, obtain the required septic permits from the New Mexico Environment Department, obtain sign permits adherent to the Taos County Sign Regulations ordinance, and with performance criteria of the Upper Los Colonius Subzone Number One, and to enter into and record a legal agreement between the applicant and the Commissioners of the Asequia de Manuel Andres Trujillo E. Juan Manuel El Rosero Asequia. And that would be in order to guarantee protection of adequate access to the Asequia. Since the decision of the Planning Commission on July 25th, the New Mexico Department of Transportation has issued the two access permits for each of the ingress and egress points associated with this proposed development. These permits were signed and approved by the New Mexico Department of Transportation's District Five engineer Javier Martinez, following a review of the proposal and traffic analysis provided by the applicant. And it's worth noting, in applications like these where the access points are off of state highways, we must defer to the Department of Transportation to provide their review and the appropriate permits. None of us in the Planning Department are traffic engineers. Castan Sabian served as the project manager for Atwell Engineering and was the primary point of contact between the applicants and the Planning Department for the duration of the application process. And Sabian reached out to the Planning Department in July 2022, inquiring about zoning for the Parson question and the process for approval for a gas station and convenience store in this location. And my email to Ms. Sabian allowed her know that the Upper Los Colonius Neighborhood Association pursuant with ordinance 2003-1 would be asked to provide analysis and findings to the Taos County Planning Department or Taos County Commission on any proposed improvements, subdivisions, or other activities affecting this neighborhood, and would provide analysis and findings for each permanent application in the Upper Los Colonius area, and as consistent with 2003-1, which gives the Neighborhood Association the right to form an advisory standards board, which is only in an advisory capacity, but we have all these applications in this manner. And I recommended at that time, as we do with all applications within the Upper Los Colonius Neighborhood, so let Ms. Sabian reach out to the Upper Los Colonius Neighborhood Association to discuss the proposal and see what concerns there might be. And I provided her with the ULCM and email address. And I provided her with the UL CNA email address. That project was put on hold, but when we were contacted again by Ms. Sevilla more than a year later, I was told that the applicants did have an initial Zoom call with the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, which I believe marked the first of several meetings between the BW Gas and Convenience Team and the UL CNA. Regarding the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association's objections to the All Subspecial Use Permit, planning staff received a letter on May sixth, two thousand twenty-four, one month after Atwell Engineering had submitted the application that laid out concerns regarding many of the issues I also had brought up to the applicants as part of my initial application review, including maximum rock coverage, the color of the building, adding additional landscaping, and addressing ordinance two thousand three dash one's requirement for an adobe-style wall to define the boundary of the development. In reference to that latter standard in that May fifth letter, the UL CNA Advisory Standards Board stated that entry and exit walls would be appropriate, given that other properties in Upper Los Colonias have similar laws that really just define the entryway and the exit, the ingress and egress. Planning staff agreed. While the May sixth letter expressed opposition to the project based on the compatibility standards of four point six point one of the Taz County Land Use Regulations, a second letter signed by UL CNA Board President Kurt Etterbach, Vice President and Standards Advisory Board Chair Philip Caston, and Board Members Michael Tarleton and John Halli, was delivered on May seventh, expressing that, and I quote, "UL CNA Board Members providing this follow-up letter did not support sending the May sixth UL CNA letter as written." The second letter went on to state that due to pressure from some UL CNA Board Members and other UL CNA members, the May sixth letter deviated substantially from the original intent, which was to proactively work with all supplemental applicant in a cooperative manner to address concerns of our neighborhood. I bring this up only to demonstrate that due to its subjective nature of the compatibility standards, there has been even some disagreement within the leadership of the UL CNA and in lieu by some members to work with the applicants to create the best possible project rather than oppose it outright on the subjective basis of compatibility. The clear differences of opinion expressed by various members of the community today further demonstrate the challenges of making concrete decisions based on the subjective nature of the compatibility standards. Not having specific performance criteria tied to compatibility standards, planning staff will accept a use of visual impact mitigation statement from the applicants and work with them to mitigate neighborhood concerns through other performance criteria like landscape and lighting plans. While the compatibility standards are indeed subjective, some evidence does lean in favor of compatibility for the proposed project, as there are more than a dozen commercial properties within the area of notice, including industrial uses like Taz gravel and two agro-industrial cannabis production businesses. There are only four residences within the area of notice, and each one of those sits on a commercial property, including the property that houses Speedway Gas Station on US sixty-four. That said, concerns of compatibility are always a worthy consideration, and we worked to mitigate potential harm by strictly enforcing the performance criteria of the Land Use Regulations, including two thousand three dash one. After my initial review of the special use permit application, the applicant did make changes regarding each of the aforementioned items pointed out as causes for concern in the May sixth UL CNA letter. Among these, the applicant reduced the footprint of the development to fall under fifty percent maximum coverage threshold, and they provided planning samples of the materials to be used in construction of the convenience store, demonstrating a darker stucco color preferred by the UL CNA Board and ordinance two thousand, excuse me, ordinance two thousand three dash one. The applicant also placed adobe-style walls at the entry and exit points on their site plan. The second round of submittals also included the addition of more trees in the landscape plan as an effort to create more of a visual barrier between the development and the surrounding area. With each round of submittals and resubmittals, I contacted the Upper Los Colonias Neighborhood Association and provided them with copies of the resubmitted documents. Following several rounds of staff review and subsequent resubmittals by the applicant, SB USC twenty-four dash zero zero four was deemed to be complete, deemed to be a complete application on June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. The public hearing before the planning commission was scheduled for July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, in accordance with the notification requirements provided in Article Six of the Land Use Regulations. After hearing evidence, the planning commission voted four to zero to approve the application with the conditions mentioned earlier. Staff's determination of completeness was based on the applicant's adherence to the applicable submittal requirements and performance standards outlined in the staff report for this appeal hearing. These included the submittal requirements of Section four point four point two, performance criteria outlined in Section four point seven point one, the compatibility standards of Section four point six one, the performance criteria of ordinance two thousand three dash one, Subzone Number One, and adherence to ordinance two thousand six dash nine, the Taz County Night Sky Protection Act, which is in desperate need of review. So, you know, we held them to the standards where there are specs that apply. We had them shield their lighting and lighting at the ground. You know, two thousand six dash nine does not account for LED lighting, so the applicants did voluntarily make that change in the temperature color, and that was much appreciated due to the fact that that ordinance is in need of revision. The planning commission ultimately agreed with staff's determination, and as such, planning staff recommends that the Board of Commissioners either affirm the decision of the planning commission or affirm the decision with conditions. I do have one recommended condition if you choose to go that route, and that would be within those aforementioned, somebody brought up the standards of making sure that the underground petroleum storage tanks are a hundred and fifty feet away from the Asequia. They're around a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty right now. I don't think it would be any problem for the applicant to go ahead and get those over to a hundred and fifty, so I think that could be an added condition of approval if you do decide to affirm with conditions. And with that, I stand for any questions you might have.
Questions from Commissioners for Mr. Jones. Seeing questions.
I do have a couple of questions. Certainly, the Asequia is a big concern, and so I am concerned, and I appreciate the fact that you said a hundred and fifty could be one of the conditions, but where does everything else run off? I mean, we all know that there's, when you're putting gas, sometimes a port spills out. I'm just wondering what, how do you, how do you also that be?
As part of the special use permit application process, the applicant is required to submit a drainage plan, and so they have designed the proposed development so that all the drainage comes back the other way toward a drainage pond that's on the other side of the property, between the store location and New Mexico one fifty, I believe.
And what is the distance from the curb to the closest point of an Asequia, the Asequia?
So, the standards don't necessitate that distance, so I'm not sure. I think it's probably around forty feet from the closest point on the Asequia. We did require that the applicants move the diesel fueling canopy over to make sure that they meet the setback requirements of fifty feet for that, and I believe that's, you know, about ten feet in from the curb. So I think the curb is probably around forty feet, and the canopy is fifty feet, as is required.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from Commissioners.
Thank you, Chairman. That's kind of a follow-up to Commissioner Beal's questions about the Asequias and about runoff, because we all know, you know, like, you step out of your car to put gas in, and like, there's going to be a little bit there. Is this, would this be the closest, and you might not know the answer to this, I get it, that any gas station is to an existing, working Asequia in Taz County?
You're right. I don't know the, I don't know the answer to that. I feel like that the Speedway off of sixty-four in Alprado might be closer, but I'm not as, you know, I'm not as familiar with that project. I didn't work on that application.
And it might not be.
And it might not be.
This might not be a question to answer, I realize that, but it was something that came to my mind as I'm reviewing all these things. And again, like, the Commissioner Beal's question about runoff and your answer about, like, the design of the property to, like, go into the drainage pond, does that design and the capacity take into account, like, the increasing deluges of rain we are seeing and will continue to see? And again, might not be, even though this actually might be for our friends from All Subs, but that's another question. I mean, we see these outpourers over and over now, including right here at home, and things get into waterways, that we would prefer them not to be in there.
I, to attempt to answer that question, I don't know the specific answer, but I do know that there are engineering standards that are applicable on these types of things, and they have to take into consideration things like one-hundred-year storms and things of that nature.
Yeah, and that's what we're seeing right now, is those one-hundred years every, you know, six months.
Right. And nothing in between.
And then just a, kind of a, bit of a bureaucratic question, the environmental site assessment from the company called Partner is marked draft everywhere, not signed. Is there a reason for that?
I think we could make that a condition of approval, that they provide a final version as well.
Thank you. Oh, and kind of along those same lines, if I might mishear. There's also a wetlands map in here, and I don't know if the planning department produced it or who produced it, but without it being in color, we can't read it. It's like, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that would be, you know, every applicant, every application in the county has to submit a wetlands, floodplain wetlands review application through our department. And so I apologize that that didn't get to you in color. We do have color version.
In black and white, it's not, the code is not readable. I get it's part of the process, and I appreciate that because it's important, but without, like, we can't read the codes.
Right, right. And I think probably what it, in fact, I could look at it right now, but I'm pretty sure that what it shows is that it's not in a floodplain, and it shows the Asequia probably as what is known as a riverine. I'm not our floodplain expert by any stretch, but I do know that usually things like Asequias and Arroyos will show up as a riverine, and that doesn't necessarily grant it any special floodplain status.
Another question?
Yes, I do have one more question. We talked about the landscaping and the compromises made for that, like, more trees, different landscaping, more landscaping. How is that going to be watered? Where is the water for that going to come from?
That would be a question for the applicant, but I believe the plan was to plant, you know, drought-resistant trees, pineon, and things of that nature.
Okay, that would be a very good idea, because I, I mean, I think that the water's coming from Alprado Water and Sanitation, right? And I don't know that that allows for, I mean, I'm part of a mutual domestic, it's for domestic groups, not for my alone.
There may be some watering required as part of that, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions? So, so, from planning and vicinity of this, most of the problem?
I believe the plan is to put one in.
Okay.
It's to put one in, to put a line in, because they brought the line up sixty-four.
Oh, the sewer.
No, no, there is not. So the applicant is having to apply for septic permits, and that, and approval of those septic permits is another one of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Right. Yeah. Brett wanted me to clarify that it's not in a floodplain. Yeah, going back to the, that question.
Okay. Any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, I think we're at the point of decision, and this is decision. Do you have a question? Who has a question?
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Muscudanis, and a second by Commissioner Bush to go into executive session. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you, and we will go into executive session, and we also are in coming lunch break time, so hopefully go do a lunch and come back. So, thank you all for your patience.
Do you want to give a time?
The time is one twenty.
Yeah, ten, we'll be back in a few.
Yeah. We'll be back in the chambers.
What time about?
Two ten.
Want to say two ten?
Two ten.
Yeah. We'll say, we'll say two. Two ten, I think. Okay. We're going to reserve a two ten.
This conference will now be recorded.
And we'll clarify that when we come back.
This conference will now be recorded.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session back in public session? Motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Muscudanis. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes, and we have a report back in executive session.
Mr. Chairman, only those matters that were discussed in the motion for entering to executive session were discussed during executive session, and no final decisions were made. The motion that I referred to when you went into executive session did not have the statute number, and I'll go ahead and include that, it's ten dash fifteen dash one H three that allows for deliberations by a public body in connection with an administrative adjudicatory proceeding. Anyway, that's my report, sir.
Okay, well, our attorney, is there a motion to approve the attorney's report?
Motion to approve?
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Beal, second by Commissioner Muscudanis to approve that attorney's report. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Beal?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherinas?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you. And at this point, we do have before us discussion, consideration, decision, and barring appeal, dash twenty-four dash zero zero one. Commissioners, what is your, well, is that motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to affirm the decision of the planning commission with three additional conditions. Number one, the appellant shall ensure that the underground storage tanks are at least a hundred and fifty feet from the nearest bank of the current Asequia property. Number two, the appellant shall comply with the night skies ordinance, current ordinance, and any amendments moving forward. And number three, the appellant shall provide a final non-draft environmental site assessment paperwork prior to construction.
Mr. Chairman, to make the motion, I think you said appellate, and I think it's applicant.
Applicant, okay.
Right, because the appellate.
We'll be amended. Applicant.
Okay, correction. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. Second by Commissioner Romero. And the further discussion, comments before the vote, Madam Clerk, please call away.
Mr. Chair, do we, or Mr. Treher, do we need to check with the applicant about that night sky revision? So what, in effect, the nature of that is, should Taz County adopt a more stringent night sky restriction, that this property would have to comply with that? Should we put?
No.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's the motion. If it were to fail, and someone, if somebody on the board would say, well, I don't know if we can do that, I'm not going to vote for it, and it goes down, then it can be an issue that you can bring back up.
Mr. Chair, can we do a friendly amendment? Can we do a friendly amendment? Can he amend it to include that?
To include what?
We ask you to, with your motion, to do a, we reserve the right to include what?
With your motion to do a, we reserve the right to include what Commissioner Bush is concerned.
He did say it.
Okay.
He did say it.
Okay, I just thought we wanted to clarify a little bit more of God, and I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just spoke to the applicant, who said they would be willing to comply with any future iteration of the night skies ordinance, so you have here. I think the motion is.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or just comments? If not, Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Thank you, and appreciate, appreciate your patience, appreciate all your comments. Thank you very much. We'll move on in the agenda, and the next item is 10 resolutions and ordinances, discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of resolution number 2024-46, a resolution declaring the intent of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County, New Mexico, to consider for adoption and ordinance enacting an improvement special assessment program within Taos County.
It's Jessica Stern.
Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good to see you. I think it was about two or three meetings ago, I introduced the CPACE program, which is a financing program that allows for renewable and energy efficiency financing for private developments. We have done quite a bit of work internally in discussion with different departments to understand what work might be needed to administer this ordinance. It's very, very minimal. I think we have a green light from everyone inside of the county, and so this resolution is simply to acknowledge the intent to publish the draft ordinance ahead of when we are creating the final ordinance. So this is really just an intent to publicize the ordinance for review, and we'll continue internally to create the final version of the ordinance for your review.
Questions for Mr. Stern? When do you anticipate that it will be published?
I'm going to look at our attorney. No, I'm I'm sort of teasing. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think we don't have a timeline, but we're moving forward with intent and intention. I think we're anticipating, hopefully presenting it to you in November, County Manager.
Yeah, November 19.
Oh, was that the date?
So, the ordinance will be up for adoption on November 19th, so legally, we have to advertise two weeks prior before before we vote on an ordinance. So we should be looking at October 31st would be the publication date in the Taos News. We had to push it back because we don't know when our first meeting in November is going to be, so we did select the date of November 19th, and this will ensure that it's published in the Taos News two weeks prior, so that we're looking at October 31st. Okay, thank you. Any more questions, not as a motion from commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I move, wait a second, I move, which one are we, 10?
A.
11A. I move approval of resolution number 2024-46 declaring the intent of the Board of County Commissioners of Taos County to consider to adopt an ordinance enacting an improvement special assessment program within Taos County.
I'll second that. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Bush, second by Commissioner Muscadenius to approve said resolution. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. Okay. Jessica. We move next to discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of resolution number 2024-47, a resolution authorizing participation in the law enforcement recruitment fund. Andrew Montoya?
This is just to approve the memorandum to allow the DFA, you know, to enter the agreement with the DFA to provide us with recruitment funds. They will be paid out the first year at 100%, the second year at 50%, and the third year at 25%, and it's a little over $600,000.
Money in the harbor. Yeah.
This conference is to add new positions to the detention centers. This is like the one we approved in the fire and rescue departments. Adding new positions, so we'll have to fully reserve these positions.
Unless anyone has a question, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve this resolution number 2024-47. And I also want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Behill, second by Commissioner Romero to approve 2024-47. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we have the consent agenda, items A through through H. Any, any item anyone would like to further discuss?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have approval of the consent agenda, items A through H as presented.
Second that, okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Bush, second by Commissioner Muscadenius to the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, please call away.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Behill?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Saisha Mascherini?
Yes.
Chair Romero?
Yes. And we're on H, approval of DFA resolution number 22, FY 2425, funding budget adjustment requested to make a temporary loan from 0298 grant match fund in amount of $250,000 for appropriation.
That was approved, Chair.
That's part of each. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was part of the consent. Okay, so we move on to County Manager's Report, and Manager, how do you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Be brief, this is your way, two weeks ago, Jessica Stern and Chelsea Reedy from the Taos Community Auditorium delivered a speech presentation at the International Economic Development Council Conference, I know Conference in Denver, it was, the presentation was very well-attended, and Jessica and Chelsea did a good job representing Taos County. Then on dispatch, Mr. Zaragoza did give me some data, as you recall, in the July meeting, he did come regarding that data portal to asking the public to add additional information that feeds in our dispatcher information. So so far, we have 74 businesses, residents that have signed up for the program to give us additional information. We have 24 pets registered, and we have 19 at-risk residents that have been registered. So we do need to push out the social media posts on getting more people registered, so I'll work with Mr. Zaragoza on that as well. Last week, last Tuesday, our auditors were on-site for one day. The Finance Department, the Treasurers Office, Purchasing Office, they've been working over the last three months feeding the information in the documents through the portal. So they were on-site for one day. They are going to be coming back up in October. We don't have a date certain yet, but in October, we'll also do the entrance conference at that time. So right now, we're right on schedule with the audit report. And then the vacancy rate through the end of September is at 18%, which equates to 52 open positions. But please also recall, we just added four new positions to fire and rescue, so. And then we also, no, that was already in there, community schools director position, we did interview for that last week, and we're yet to make a decision. We have also posted the county records custodian position, so that's been posted. This position is going to work with Shannon, with the clerk's office, with the sheriff's office, with all departments of the county, but most of those three offices where we see the clerk's office gets the referral requests, and then this person will work with all the departments to ensure that their address in timely fashion as required by law. And so that's been posted as well. You probably received an email from me, the notice of the public meeting for the Taos County Comprehensive Plan, which is a week, well, not a week from today, Monday, October 7th, there's two time slots, 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. or 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. next door at the Senior Center. And we don't have a timeframe yet to when they will be coming before the commission and presenting a copy of the comprehensive plan as well. Andy is still working on the short-term rental application now that he's done with All Subs' application, he's going to go back and start working on the short-term rental application. On the public works side, on the Rio Triquito Bridge, we're going to have to do an amendment to get some more right-of-way for a parcel acquisition. There's two minor parcels that we're going to need in relation to the Rio Triquito Bridge improvements. On La Valencia Road, the plans have been submitted, environmental has been completed, we have an updated estimate cost, we have the draft contract book, which is submitted and which requires final review. And so we're just getting ready to bid out that for construction season next year. So Joe Fernandez is working closely with us on getting that ready for bid out next year. Blueberry Hill Road, Phase 1, as you know, we've had the mowing in two and a half inches, the pavement has been completed with the final paving, including the side road aprons. That's going to start on Monday, so to the section that we've paved, we'll go back and improve those aprons, and that'll take approximately two weeks to work on those aprons. The gates for the John Den switchbacks have been fabricated, but we haven't installed them yet. And and so we're going to be doing that in the next two weeks, and we'll install our gates for the switchbacks. There's a total of two gates, one at the bottom and one at the top, and we're going to start doing some road repairs to go in and do that work on the gates. Tom Holder Road, WH-specific, has been formed and submitted the scoping report to the county with alternate bridge and right-of-way connections to Tom Holder, New Mexico 240, and Camino de Medio. We'd like to do a retreat, work study with the commission to go over those, that scoping report, and there's some decisions that are to be made next week. Planning to meet with two of the affected landowners to start going over that. So we'll be contacting you to when we could do a quick retreat to go over that scoping Next week, we're also starting, before the weather changes on us, is some crack seal projects on those Cortez roads on District 1 and 3, we're doing a crack seal there. On Old State Road 570, District 1 and 3, we're doing crack sealing there, Camino de Medio, District 1, we're doing some crack sealing as well. On Upper Ranchitos Road, we're District 4, we're doing some crack sealing there. The chip seal projects in Pinesco have nearly been completed, and it just lacks the fog seal, which will be completed in the next couple of weeks. And the Rio Vas, Rio Vasado paving over there will start on the completion of Blueberry Hill Road, so they'll come off of that project and then come over to Rio Vasado Road. Just a quick reminder, and I've mentioned this before, on October 8th through the 10th, at the Sage Brush is the New Mexico Wildland Urban Face Summit. Chair Romero is giving the welcoming remarks. There is going to be a presentation by Mr. Logan, so there's still time if you want to register for that conference. And New Mexico Counties is putting this one on. Commissioner?
I'm trying to remember. Did I just say?
I've mentioned at the last couple of meetings that there's that wildland summit. So the next commission meeting is October 15th, and we'll probably be a little more Hopefully, we'll be able to do the first quarter report. That might be a little bit of a stretch for October 15th, but it'll be more staff-oriented because voting will commence in the commission chambers on October 8th, Friday, Monday. Valerie and her team will be setting up for early voting, which will begin here October 8th. And before I open it up for any questions, I'd like us to recognize Anissa for her birthday on October 3rd.
Happy birthday.
So with that said, I will stand for any questions.
First of all, I want to thank you for all those road updates, but what I didn't hear was La Morada, and that has been on the radar for four years now, and I've got an upcoming meeting that they're going to ask what's.
Wait, it's just so I was talking to you, we've got to get the school district to sign the easement, so.
But they approved already, right? They approved it in the minutes.
It's gone through now in the third superintendent since it's been approved, former Superintendent Trujillo. I'm not sure, not talking about, I don't know why that didn't get signed under her, and then the interim superintendent didn't get signed either. My understanding is their lawyers are okay with it, it's been approved by the board, it just needs, we just need that final easement to get signed.
And and thank you, I understand that, and I know Mr. Silva has kept me updated, it's just my concern now is that we're, we have a particular timeframe, the asequias, once they stop running, you know, we're going to, it's going to, if we don't jump on it right now, we're not going to be able to do this for another year because of the asequias. And so my concern is, do we need to go to a board meeting and just, I don't know what else to do, but I feel like like four years is more than enough time, and we should have already, I mean, it's embarrassing for me to have to say, I'm sorry, we can't get the school to sign off when they've already approved it in their minutes.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't mind going to a board meeting and and standing there and saying, please sign, but, you know, I'm trying to be patient, but I think four years is way too much.
Right. The other thing I failed to remember, I had it in my notes, is on this last Wednesday, we did have Mr. Madrid and myself attended the hospital's board meeting online. Their architect consultant did present some conceptual drawings for a site plan for the new medical office building that they believe will be approximately 20,000 square feet. This firm is also the one that's going to do the building improvements for the existing building, and that will be using the gross receipts tax bond money as well. The the gross receipts tax bond money, it's a, that application will go before the Finance Board now in October as well, so. So down the road, when the drawings are a little more complete, I've asked them to come, they'll be, it'll be online, but because this firm's from back east, so they'll present what the drawings are. So there's still a lot of work to do with the new medical office building. I mentioned before, we do attend the weekly meetings, they're going to get a lot more intense. Now, we still have to do the property transfer from Holy Cross over to the county before Mr. Trujillo leaves, we do want to speak with him on that. If he was going to really take the lead on it, my understanding is Madre Ospelina, they've also retained Madre Ospelina, and so see if it's Madre Ospelina that's going to take the lead on that as well. So with that said, I stand for questions again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Brent, a lot of, and thank you to our team, too, a lot of road updates, so appreciate that. One sort of just comment, bit of a request I've been hearing out there is, if the new part of Blueberry Hill will get striped before winter, would it be possible for that to, and you don't have to answer this now, I just want to put this. And you don't have to answer this now, just want to put this out there, to go all the way down to Two-Forty? Because in the winter, actually right now, as dusk approaches, like you, you can't see. So, it just, that would be a super help if that could be arranged. And the other thing, very exciting to hear about the John Dunn switchback gates. Thank you to the whole team for that. And then my question, you mentioned a number of chip seal and other projects. Where in Chitos, for those of us who are taking Millicent Rogers and then coming along Ranchitos and then like right between Carabaya and La Posta, I think, there are like axle breaking holes. There are like maybe three of them and they're danger. If you don't remember that they're there and then slow down and, and if you don't have the opportunity to go into the other lane, they're serious. So, just want to put that on the radar.
I'll get with you after to...
Okay, I've got it pulled up on the map right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Treasurer Santa Estevan texts me. She also wanted to let you know that there's going to be a tax auction on October ninth, which is Wednesday at ten A.M. out in the courtyard. So, any delinquent tax properties, so I'm sure it's been advertised in, in the papers. So, anybody wants to look at it?
I'm sorry, but now that you've mentioned that, just something to think about and I guess it could have set this on new business, but it just came to mind now. Most recently, folks have been talking about those quarter acre lots and I know a lot of times they're uncollectible on this end and it takes a while for them to get on the public auction. I'm just wondering, and this obviously would be a conversation with our assessor, but I think it would be a great, something to consider is maybe combining some of those to, to larger parcels where they are buildable. For one, we're seeing a lot of, or hearing a lot about squatters. And so, you know, if, if you have larger parcels and you have buildable sites versus, and it's also collectible. So, just something to, to consider having a conversation around.
Right, okay.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we move then to general construction update with Sanchez.
General Construction update, all the work... Projects are in, ready for go-to-contract now that all this fiscal hoops have gone through. We have funded budgets and line items and we can start writing contracts for Pinesco, for the Detox Center, for General Camado Community Center, for El Prado, for all the different projects. Home Do Community Center, their bathroom remodel is ongoing, demolition has happened and we're slowly working through that. The Veteran Cemetery, waiting final inspections and fire marshals and whatnot. Ag Center, we're waiting for final inspections, fire marshal. There is some additional work that wasn't done because of COVID and our other contractor. And so, I've been in talks with our facility build to, and New Mexico CID to renew that permit. It's mostly cosmetic stuff, vinyl base along the bottom and thermostats on the walls, a few little items. We did have a leak this past summer with all the rain in one, and I believe the ladies restroom, so we're going to have to do a little bit of drywall repair, get up on the roof and see what's going on with that metal roof. But for the most part, projects are winding up, the ones that we've had in progress. All the other projects, which are Los Anega, like so, Pinesco, General Camado, El Prado Water, El Prado Community Center, the Detox Center, all those, we have our proposals. We have line items and budgets now, and so now we can start writing contracts and start getting some things moving. That's pretty much what's going on. It's always a little difficult time at this time of the year to get everything. Once our final budget and everything's in place. But if there's any questions about any particular projects?
Any questions? I guess not. Go on, go ahead to the historic kind of courthouse.
Historic courthouse, obviously, we have some significant funding coming in and so, we'll be sitting with our architect and contractor to go through scopes and see how far, hopefully, we can get it, an occupiable building because of the hidden damage caused by the roof that was leaking. Obviously, we're going to have, we've already had a significant change order to do structural shoring. That's already in place, though there's not really much concern about losing the front of the building, the front corners, but now we have to repair them. Along with the repairs, the roofers are there, starting to get ready to remove the roof. Then the contractor will have to evaluate how, what kind of condition the roof structure is. I believe that most of the roof structure is in pretty good shape. It's that front twenty feet that's been leaking and the water's been infiltrating. So, I'm hoping that we don't have to completely tear the structure off of the whole roof. Over the courthouse area, that roof is, appears to be in pretty good shape. We'd cut holes in the roof to get down in there and examine when we started the project. It hasn't leaked, it's, like I said, that's in pretty good shape. It's that front twenty feet by the, by the plaza. So, obviously, that's going to cut into our budget, but I believe that, I think, we're going to have an occupiable, and it'd be nice if we had a little bit more money, but we're going to work with it. What's going on right now, we've already had the structural steel delivered for the elevator roof, the elevator shaft roof, the landing for the lobbies where we're going to open up, the structural steel required to open up the walls into the elevator lobby, that kind of stuff. And so, that is going to start. We're also waiting for Kid Carson to relocate one power pole. It's not actually in our way, but because of the over-escavation and to prepare for sidewalks and handicap ramps, the concern is that it could fall over. And that's not what we need to tear all the neighbors' electricity down for a while. So, we've talked to Kid Carson, they're working on, we have a plan of getting their schedule to put in a larger pole and move it back right to the corner of the property. And so, as soon as that happens, we can really start in the back, in the back. There's also a lot of electrical that nobody knows where it's at. We've found some and relocated some, but we know there's some more that's in there. They just don't know exactly what's there and where it is. So, that's probably the biggest unknown right now on the north side of the building. Once we get that pole relocated and we over-escalate and find all the conductors for our neighbors that cross through the middle of our property, but that's what was done back in the day, we'll relocate them and just keep moving things forward. The asphalt where the primary power or secondary power and the new transformer came in have been patched, so neighbors are, they have full access again to the alleyway and whatnot. Like I said, roofers have their scaffolds up and up onto the roof. Frank and Safety Officer was there today and looking over everything. The only thing he saw, he asked for a little bit more lighting on the construction access that we're using into the courthouse, because it's a little dark, especially when you come in from the bright outside light and you step in, it's kind of dark. So, they're going to get some more temporary lights in there and we'll be moving forward, hopefully rapidly. Questions?
Chair, thank you, Richard, for that update. But the, I had received a call and I sent him your way in regards to apparently when the rains were hitting, something that we had, something that was affecting the neighbor and the water was running into their store. Were you able to, I was curious how that...
Yeah, so, so the neighbor to the east has a full basement where the water's all us. Apparently, and technically, it's not our water. I discussed with the owner, I discussed with the manager, we've gone over different things. When we start working in there, like we did on the west side, we will be waterproofing their building to protect them or be a good neighbor. That's part of the scope of the work. What happened now with a bunch of the rain, there is some puddling between the two buildings. Their foundation is somewhat porous and so, water did go into their basement. Some of it was their own water dripping right on the corner of the, of the building.
Okay.
And so, it was working its way in. We've done a few little things to try and mitigate it, we're going to do some more cleanup. And now that we start working that way, like I said, as we, when we open that whole east alleyway, we will be waterproofing everything we expose and then restuck away. So, like I said, it really wasn't our responsibility. It's not, our gutter wasn't going into their building, but it was standing water in that area between the two buildings. When they got water into their building, I went and checked our basement because we're basically on same basements. Ours is a little bit tighter concrete work than theirs. We had a little bit of dampness in the bottom along the floor, no standing water. And so, it's, their basement concrete work isn't quite as dense, as tight as our, as the courthouse concrete work. And so, that's where they're getting some water.
Well, thank you for addressing it, I appreciate it.
But we are addressing it.
Other question, I just wondered, is the funding all in place then to move forward on, on everything, the funding?
So, everything was approved, loans and whatnot. So, what we'll do now is we'll sit down with our architect and our contractor and we have initial, a total package price initially. Obviously, prices have changed in the last three years, but, so we'll adjust our scope. We need to figure out exactly what we have. We'll get the pricing, like I said, we have our shoring change order. We have a price for the roofing, it's the hidden damage in structure that's the unknown. Adobe work, bond beam's got a crack in it, so we're going to have to make sure we repair it and, and reinforce it. And then the damage done to the roof deck. So, once we have that a little bit more under control and get an estimate, then we'll know exactly how far we can go with our money. But we have all the paperwork now in place that now we can say, okay, this is what we have. This is what we want to do, this is where we want to end up and we'll work forward towards that. So, we'll be probably, I would like to see if we can bring that change order within the next two weeks, no later than the first of, of November, the first meeting of November, because it is going to be, well, it'll be a six million dollar change order, basically.
Okay, any other questions? If not, thank you, Richard. Thank you for that update. Okay, we're on to Commissioner, Commissioners Reports and Matters. Any business to be considered for future Commission meetings? Anything there? Okay, what about Commissioner announcements?
I've got actually two quick ones, but first, can I just rewind, Brent, that what, what our E nine-one-one team has done for that sign up? That's, that's worth underlining and emphasizing, that's been great so far. So, thank you to Roberto and the whole team. Two quick announcements, one, last week, the Taos Valley Watershed Coalition met and discussed the piles up along One-Fifty, going up toward the ski valley, all of the piles that have been gathering for thinning. And it's just kind of on us to help educate and inform our community about the fact that those, when we do have significant enough snowfall, those will start to be burned. And it was, it was an excellent, I mean, we were out there amidst the piles and talked with the Village of the Taos Ski Valley Fire Department and the Ski Valley Corporation and our federal delegation representatives and Travel Unlimited and the Esequias downstream from there. You know, the regular team that J.R. Logan convenes. And it just, we should just all have that on our radar. The Forest Service was, of course, there with their wildlife biologist and their hydrologist. And they've been doing a good job communicating about that. But just want to give a heads up that that will be happening and it's kind of on us to help, help our community understand and be prepared for that.
My second announcement is real quick. At the time of our next meeting on October fifteenth, I will be in Jackson, Wyoming for the Mountain Towns Conference, a conference focused on sustainability in mountain towns, especially those like that have a resort or are focused on a resort. So, if I can, I'll join by phone. If, if I can't, I will potentially miss my very first Commission meeting. I know. That's it, thanks.
Yes, I just wanted to let you all know, Commissioners, I will be attending the New Mexico Counties Board Meeting on Friday. And so, I'll be leaving, six-thirty, I'll be on the road to Los Alamos. Let you know. That's all I've got, thank you.
Other announcements? I have just one, Manager O'Meara, I did attend a virtual cog meeting, chance at circle. There was discussions about the film office and the county still hasn't made any commitments on that one, but that may come to us later. Also, there were discussions about the, the animal shelter. And on that one, we have had discussions ourselves on that, so I think we know what we're at on that. And finally, there were a little bit, bit of discussions on the air travel. And again, that one, we, that still might come to us later on, on any, any county participation on that in the future. Okay, with that, we're ready for adjournment? Okay. Motion by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner O'Meara, say goodbye Commissioner Brad Hill for adjournment, all in favor, indicate by say a "aye."
Aye.
Aye.